All right. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the regular meeting of council for Wednesday, September 22nd. And as usual, I will start off by saying a few words. And this time, it's going to be a little bit longer. And this is the end of our term and the last regular council meeting. So as it turns out, it looks like all of us are running and all of us have campaigns to run as well. But as I was told by a very wise man and councillor for the town of Bonneville, Ray Prevo, that your campaign actually begins the first day you're elected. And that the work you do over the four years, or three years, as it was in some terms before, that's what you should be judged on. And so for this council, you know, I'm proud to say that I was part of this council. And the work that has been done here. The, you know, some of the major accomplishments, obviously. ID 349 stands out. You know, the MD is now twice the size of what it was only a few years ago. But along with that, we created a revenue sharing agreement which is unique in the province and that municipal affairs identified as being truly of value and a great example of partnership with urbans. And so, you know, the funds that were brought in there, that stable source of funding has, will provide for our urban partners for years to come. That, you know, that took a lot of work, but this council got it done. All the ICFs, you know what, we had eight to do. The urbans get off easy with only doing one. We had to do eight and they got done. Again, lots of negotiation, but this council had clear, had a clear set of criteria as we worked through each one, and those were finished off. As far as, you know, stuff that was built, well, you know, there's always roads being built, there's always recreation which was invested in. And, you know, there's some pretty, pretty cool stuff that's going on out there. That is going to be long lasting. And for some of you, you know, these are, these are real legacy items that people will talk about for years to come. The thing I like probably most is, and it wasn't really an initiative of council, but it had happened, is the move towards a greater corporate structure. So I'd said for, from the very beginning, that a municipality is a corporation and it should be run as such. And we jumped into, you know, strategic planning for the first time as a council. We're starting finally to go down the route of long-term planning and in regards to our capital projects. The, the move towards asset management, you know, that's just, that's just a good practice. And as far as governance goes, the, the move from what I saw with, with many councils and previous councils, from opinion-based decision-making. So that's where an item is introduced, you have a large, loud discussion, and sometimes the loudest person in their room is the way the vote goes. Maybe not a whole bunch of background information. The move from that type of decision-making to information-based decision-making, and the credit for this goes entirely to, to our CAOs and staff. Because I know that it is a ton of work to, to get that ready. When we have packages coming to us that are 400 pages long, that we have to read through in the couple of days before the meeting. Yeah, when you first see that, that bottom number as the total pages, you wonder, you know, am I going to make it through this? But when you have all of that in front of you, it certainly makes it easier up here when you get down to that final RFD and the options are there. And you see that the, the background information backs up the recommendation. And that, you know, certainly has to go out to you guys for, for providing that. Makes our job a whole lot easier. You know, we've had a chance to work with a, with a few CAOs and, and I would say each one of them brought something unique to the table. And I learnt from them all. Roy Dunecko, yeah, you know what, he was a, he was a statesman. He was, he was a calming influence on a lot of people and we brought him in to do just that and he did it. Luke, he, he started to change the route in regards to the organizational structure and how we provided information to, to council. Got us kind of on that road and started improving governance. And now we've got this guy. Al, he, he comes with a ton of experience as well and we're continuing down that road. So for a, for a new council coming in, whoever it is, they're, they're going to be in good hands because you've got a CEO who can do the job and we've got GMs who are on top of it. With that, you know what, I want to thank certainly the council that, you know, it's, we've had our ups and downs, we've had our disagreements, but in the end, we got some stuff done. And for, for the staff, thanks for being there through, through all the crazy times when, and I know there were times where you were scratching your head saying, you know, what, what is council up to? But, and then to, of course, you know, the residents. Residents for, who gave us the opportunity to, to serve them. And, and obviously, we must be buggers for punishment because we are all asking to serve once again. And with that, I will come to an end on my long-winded introduction, but as it may be the last time I see you, thank you. With that, I will call the meeting to order and we have the agendas in front of you for the, are there any errors or any adoption, adoption, I see, I got so carried away. Are there any additions or deletions?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Reeve. On behalf of myself and all of the staff speaking for them, it's been our pleasure to serve the council of 2017 to 2021. Thank you very much. There is an addition to the agenda, 7.1.0 trading challenge coins. And there is a deletion to the agenda, 7.4, 7.4.3 purchase of the single axle heavy truck that could be deleted from this package as well. Thank you.
Okay, let's put the, the challenge coin right after, before the delegation. So right before 7.1.0, that, that's where we had it? Okay. Okay, with the addition and deletion, do we have a motion to approve the agenda? Councillor Faddeev?
Sure, as amended.
Okay, and we can call the votes. Now into the adoption of the minutes for the regular meeting of council for August 25th, 2021. Are there any errors or omissions? Okay, do we have a motion? Councillor Faddeev, again.
Yeah, I did not see any, I made the motion to adopt them.
Okay, we can call the votes. That's carried for the special meeting of council for September 1st, 2021. Okay, Councillor Jubenville makes the motion and we can call the votes. That is carried. Minutes for the special meeting, September 15th, 2021. Deputy Reeve makes the motion and we can call the vote. That is carried, thank you. Into committee meetings of council for September 15th, 2021, are there any errors or omissions on those minutes? Councillor Swiger makes the motion, we can call the vote. That is carried. Okay, we have no public hearings, we do have a delegation at 10 o'clock from the Alberta Conservation Association. Any business arising from minutes? Seeing none, right into new business. And the first item is the coin challenge, or challenge coin, I guess.
Good morning, Mr. Reeve, members of council.
Morning.
A challenge coin is a small coin or medallion bearing an organization's insignia or emblem and carried by the organization's members. Traditionally, they might be given to prove membership when challenged or to enhance morale. The first appearance of a challenge coin within Canada was with the Canadian Forces and more specifically, the Canadian Airborne Regiment. Although conceptualized in the early 1970s, it was not officially adopted until the regiment returned from Cyprus in 1974. Besides using coins for challenging, they are also used to, as rewards or awards for outstanding service or performance of duty. As such, they are used as a tool to build morale. Military officials occasionally give them to non-military personnel for outstanding service or rewards. And police, corrections, security and fire departments have embraced the concept and have found coins to be an excellent means of team building and creating a sense of brotherhood or belonging. A growing tradition calls for challenge coins to be traded in honor of a part, of a partnering unit or organization. This brings us here this morning for a meeting with the RCMP's Lakeland Crime Reduction Unit. I would now like to call upon Constable Robert Everly and Corporal Brendan Wellenborg of our crew team to approach council and offer their units' challenge coin for trade with our peace officer coin.
They've got some.
And we're supposed to trade, right?
I guess so.
Thank you.
Trading?
I think we are.
Yeah.
I got two, can I keep one?
Do you?
Sure.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions from councillor to the Reeve?
Yeah, no, thanks, guys, and for all the work you do out there. You guys are superstars.
Thank you.
Good luck in your local election.
Yeah, thanks.
Thanks for the support.
All right, next item.
I'll trade it for a speeding ticket.
From Environmental and Protective Services still, the quarterly report. Morning, Mr. Yance.
Okay, what I have before you today is our quarterly report for egg services, waste services, and I do have an update on our fire smart programs today. Take this off. So just touch base quickly on, and if anybody has any questions on any of the topics, please stop. So on the weed control act, we did have seasonal weed inspectors out this year, inspecting all the well sites, inspecting commercial properties, making sure that our noxious weed problems are all handled and sprayed and looked after, which was done. Mowing of our subdivisions, so that's our level of service where we go out and mow our subdivisions multiple times a year and then also do the boundary signs. The roadside mowing program, we've had lots of comments on this year, this is one of our years where we go out to, try to go out to fence line, do that mowing rate on the edge of the fence line for brush control. So that's looking good, there still have a few more weeks to wrap up that season, but it's going very well. On our roadside spraying program, I think we've done just under 300 kilometers of road this year, so that's for noxious weed control, also hitting the areas where we've done some brushing in the past. So when we get a two-year growth on that, on that brush, then we try to hit it with some chemical, it is the most economical way to control that brush at the end. The rental program, still another challenging year with COVID, just with people coming into the yard, but as the July 1st restrictions eased, it did make it a little easier and people were able to pick up back in the yards and at our satellite locations. Just on our pest calls, we get calls multiple times a year for, for pests in the crops, but also in for rats. And actually, we just had one as of yesterday. We did have a rat call come in and it was identified actually as a positive Norway rat. So probably the first time in probably 30 years that we've actually had a rat within, within the MD out in a farm, a farm setting. So we're following up on that and we'll keep council abreast once we get more information.
Council was looking at each other to see who was the rat. I think that's, yeah.
Well, do you want me to tell you what ward it's in?
Maybe, maybe later.
Also, just on the beaver control, it was a little slower than previous years, just due to the dry conditions and all the farmers wanting to keep as much water possible for the cattle and not knowing when the next rain was going to come. Clubroot and blackleg inspections were complete this year, just one confirmed field that we found clubroot in. So it's not growing crazy out there, it's, you know, I think we're up to maybe 16, 17 fields in the past five years for clubroot, which, you know, that means that the farmers are doing the right things. They are cleaning their equipment, they're using clubroot resistant canola. So yeah, it's not spreading too, too quickly. Also.
Go ahead. So, so would dry conditions have an effect on clubroot?
Yes, definitely. They, the spores don't, don't explode, I guess, out of the plants as much in the ground. So wet conditions, those spores will, will definitely multiply quicker and then have more spore load within the ground. So yeah, dry conditions definitely do help. And best management practices that most of the farmers are practicing, so. Fusarium and grasshoppers, still doing surveys, we did have a few problem areas with grasshoppers this year and I won't be surprised with, with the dry conditions. Also, next on the roadside brushing program, that's ongoing as we speak, we're still within, or with the Fort Kent area, just finishing up that in the next week or so, and then they'll be moving over to the Alexander area. So that's that 49 kilometers of brushing that was contracted out earlier this year. But a lot of positive feedback on that and people like it. On the waste side, the roadside cleanup program was conducted in June and partially July this year, just with COVID restrictions again, made a little challenging, but we still get, did get a lot of groups out to clean up the road sides and it was successful. With our seasonal staff this year, they concentrate on our bin sites and cleaning up dead-end roads, trying to keep the municipality clean and helping out at the landfills also. For mattress recycling, still another successful year, still getting a lot of mattresses come through our, our gates and those are all getting recycled, sent down to Lethbridge. Egg cycling, or egg, twine recycling and the plastic recycling still going on, lots of grain bags that were rolled up in June. And yeah, we still see increase on that. Maybe this year with maybe not as bigger crops, we might see a reduction this coming year, but we'll find out. We did use some of our recycled grain bags, we did purchase some boards from Lethbridge that we have put up at some of our sites to showcase the plastic that we are getting recycled. On our concrete recycling, both at the Lacoury landfill and Ardmore landfill, the big concrete piles were cleaned up this summer and we reused that concrete within our own projects throughout the municipality. So it's a great project, or product at the end of the day that we can easily reuse, so. Also on the Ardmore landfill expansion, that was complete this year, so we were able to find another location for a pit within the site and then we kind of shuffled all of our items around and kind of a facelift for the Ardmore landfill site, which looks really great. Also, there was delegation of councillors and the manager of waste management attended the Peace River landfill where they got to witness the waste energy project that's happening up there. Still in their pilot phase, they're still playing with materials, but I think there's some, some good things coming from that and maybe in future years, we can, we can adopt some of that, so.
Councillor Faddeev?
Yeah, just to add on to that, there's also another pilot project happening around the Stony Plain area that's looking quite successful as well. So there are a couple of changes that Peace River was asking for are adopted in Stony Plain and it's looking really good, I just seen a, an update on that a couple of days ago.
Good.
Yeah, exciting.
Okay, and as council knows, we had to cancel our Alberta Care Conference that we were part of in September, just due to the COVID-19 numbers rising in our area and we didn't feel comfortable hosting or helping to host the conference here. So that, that has been postponed till further date. And also Toxic Groundup is coming up this weekend here, here in Bonneville, it's going to be held at the Fire Hall again. And yeah, we're, it'll be a busy weekend there. To touch base on our fire smart programs, this program that we were successful in getting some grants from the fire smart. So the Marie Lake subdivision plan is going well, they're going to start work any day. So that'll see three areas around that Marie Lake subdivision having some brushing done and have that all fixed up by fall. On the Crane Lake subdivision, we went out to, we went out for tender for our engineering or our project management. We did award that to CPP, which is also doing the Marie Lake one. So they'll be coming back with a plan shortly and then we'll put out that for tender for that work to be done here this winter. And then, as everybody knows, we, in council, a couple of weeks ago, we did forward off our grant application for Evergreen Estates. So that'll be also going in 2022. We just have to wait to hear back on if we're successful. Okay, questions?
Mr. Reeve? Right. Councillor Swiger? Question for Mr. Yance. Residents of Crane Lake love the compost bin on the west side, but it's apparently quite often overflowed and they're just wondering if they can actually get another compost bin or a larger bin on the west side and possibly one on the east side.
Definitely, definitely look at that.
Yeah, appreciate that. And then my other comment was, I'm not sure what we do about weeds growing up through trails and roadways even, but I know like the trail in Ardmore, nice little trail, but you can, you can see the weeds kind of growing up through it from the edges and eventually they kind of break away and I'm not sure who controls that or if we, if we do, or anyway, something to think about. Thank you.
Okay. To the Reeve? Okay, Councillor Shane?
Thank you, to the Reeve and council, and to, I'd just like to compliment Matt and his staff at the egg division there for controlling the, and helping control the, the weed problem or the, the canola weed there. There's been a lot of work and education gone into that and we appreciate it and it's really shows by the, how it's holding those fields down to one. That's pretty darn good. Thank you.
Councillor Faddeev?
Mr. Yance, regards to the beaver bounty program that we had, how's that been working out? Never really heard an update to it. Has it been a bang-up job or?
Through the Reeve, Councillor Faddeev, yes, it's, it's been very successful. Last numbers that I've seen, we had over 20 people participate in the program itself, so that's where we get contractors, trappers in. They are then given areas that they can go trap and with permission from the landowner. So what we've been trying to do, instead of relying on our, our team to do everything, if we can actually get other people out there to help us. And then they're paid through the bounty system, you know, we pay per, per tail and reward them that way. And then also, we, the other part of that system is where the landowners can take it upon themselves to, to help clear out some of the, the beavers. So really, it's a win-win for, for all of us. You know, trappers are, are taking in those animals, they can use the fur or reuse those animals instead of them just being wasted shot. So it's kind of a win-win program. So we're definitely seeing reduced numbers. It does help with the lack of moisture this year too, that they won't expand into new areas. They kind of just have smaller litter sizes when they get this pressure, so, you know, Mother Nature is also helping us on the same time. It'll, we'll see in the future year or two on, on the numbers and our calls that we get and how many plug culverts we get and how we have to control it that way. One of the other things that's helping the program, we're doing a lot more fencing around the culverts, where we're using the pond levelers to control the level of water, so we don't have to go back and open up these culverts daily or every second or third day. We have some fencing that works well and, and so yeah, there's, it's kind of a toolbox of ideas that we've used over the past years and it's definitely helping.
So as a, as a municipality, do we follow under the same regulations and guidelines as a trapper would? Or, or is this considered a pest control program? Just had that asked by a trapper and, and I'm just not, I wasn't sure.
Yeah, through the Reeve to Councillor Faddeev, yeah, so we do have some special exemptions because of our maintenance of our roadways. So we do, we are able to trap throughout the year. It's kind of like a, a damage control permit from Fish and Wildlife that we're able to use all the year round because we are doing maintenance on our roads. So yeah, we do have some exemptions presented to us, but there's also a lot of exemptions out for private landowners too. You know, if you do have a pest on your land as a beaver, you can control that beaver 12 months of the year. There are a few other restrictions if we're up in the Crown land that, that people have to abide by, but yeah, it's for beavers and that they do try to leave it as open as possible.
Awesome, thanks. Okay, Deputy Reeve?
Thank you, Mr. Reeve. And Mr. Yance, how many people took advantage of the fence line brushing program?
Fence line brushing program, so that's the, that's the back sloping program where, where we pay up to $3,500.
That's right.
I don't have the numbers right in front of me, but I know we do have multiple people this year. I don't, we still have money within our budget, I'm not exactly sure, but I can find out from council and email everybody just to see where we are with the program.
Okay, thank you.
And through the Reeve, just to maybe speak a little bit, 30 seconds on that program. Since the egg department's taken over the brushing with contractors in the past couple of years, so our roadside back sloping program is paid up to $3,500. You know, we definitely see our, our other program, it's more like $5,000 to $6,000 per half mile that we pay for our contracted services to take out those trees. And I know some of the roads that we've chosen the past couple of years aren't the simplest roads, but, but I definitely see the merit of the other program where we pay out that $3,500. And I could see if we did increase that value to $4,500 or $5,000, there definitely would be a benefit to the municipality. Because it's, at the end of the day, it's a better product. The rocks are all removed from the back slope and it's all cleaned up and contoured nicely. Where when we do our program right now with our contractors, if the landowner doesn't agree to do anything, you, you'll have that sharp back slope or you still may have some rocks in that back slope of the road. So something, something to think about when we go into budget season.
Okay, Councillor Jubenville?
So Mr. Yance, in the case of that program, what happens with the fencing? Does the MD supply fencing also, or is that included in the $3,500?
Yeah, for the roadside back sloping program where we pay the farmers at $3,500, they look after fencing. hundred dollars, they look after fencing, we just tell them where they have to put it. If it's on, if it's a sixty-six foot right-of-way, they have to put it on the thirty-three foot part of the, of the right-of-way. Now, if it's a hundred foot right-of-way, they'll, they can go back to that fifty feet. But they look after the fencing costs and we don't have to do anything, so that's all upon the landowner and it's good because they get to clean up their portion of their property and get paid a little bit of money because they're cleaning up our portion of our property too.
Yeah, I might have to look at that one because barbed wire, I just bought some at a hundred and nine dollars a roll. You know, I used to get that for, yeah, yeah. Yeah, it's, it's gone way up, so.
councillor Shane.
To the Reeve and councillor and director, I was just wondering if there was any thoughts on discussing who's, who is in control of the brushing program, roadside brushing program? Since you guys are in the egg department, I'm just wondering if you guys want to discuss putting that on the, the transportation utilities department, if there's any discussion on that.
Through the Reeve to councillor Dushane, I know we do have one action item coming up for budget. It was asked us earlier in the year to get cost comparisons of the contracted brushing services to the in-house brushing services that Infrastructure Services now does. So during the budget deliberation, I think that'll be brought forward to council to discuss on the cost of, of each services. I can, during that time, I can kind of give a brief history of what happened in the past and what we've done in the past two years. You know, we work as a team, both departments, but it's ever council wishes, so.
Okay, just, yeah, just a thought for upcoming budgeting and see who's, maybe somebody feels that it's better suited to the TNU department or, you know, it's just part of our discussion, I guess. Thank you.
Okay. Mr Seo.
Thank you, Mr Reeve, members of council. To that question, I think the important question for council is what, what monies does council want to put at roadside brushing and where those areas should be and what that would look like. And then internally, we can decide as to which department is best suited to, is it an egg, is it a roadside? I, I think there are some crossovers, but I think the bigger question is what does the program look like going forward in terms of, you know, the high-level vision of what we want our roadside brushing program to look like.
Okay, thank you. With that, do we have a motion to accept the reports as information?
I'll make that motion.
By councillor Dushane, everyone can call the votes. That is carried, thank you, and it is just past ten o'clock, so we do have a delegation. And it is the, where are we going to go? Come on up, guys, the Alberta Conservation Association.
I have to provide my presentation too.
Sure, yeah, we can take a few minutes, get set up.
Okay. Let's, it's going to take some coordinating here between my computer and what's on there, so. Okay, yeah, good morning, Mr Reeve and councillors. My name is Brad Hurkitts, I'm a biologist with the Alberta Conservation Association. I'm also the project lead, the provincial project lead for the Lake Aeration Project and joining me today in the, in the audience is Peter Akku. He is the, the programs, the fisheries programs manager for Alberta Conservation Association. So today here, I am talking today, providing you a presentation on the Little, Little Bear Lake Aeration Project that we have going. I'd just like to start off to provide you with a little bit of information about ACA and who we are, Alberta Conservation Association. We are a non-for-profit charitable and delegated administrative organization under the Alberta Wildlife Act. We perform certain activities like the Lake Aeration Project on behalf of the Government of Alberta and Alberta Environment Parks. Majority of our funding comes from levy dollars that are charged towards hunting and angling licenses and pig sales and a small portion comes from partnership funding. It's also an important source for our projects. Our mission as an organization is to conserve, protect and enhance fish, wildlife and habitat for Alberta's, Albertans to enjoy, value and use. Within our organization, we have four resource programs. They include fisheries, wildlife, habitat and communications. Within the fisheries program, we have a provincial lake aeration project. So we use lake aeration as a management technique to provide Albertans with Alberta angling, Albertans with recreational angling in areas of the province where such fishing opportunities are limited. The objective of the project is to maintain lake habitats that promote year-round survival of sport fish by maintaining dissolved oxygen levels above three milligrams per liter. So that is the lower threshold for trout survival, three milligrams. The water bodies that we aerate are typically shallow, eutrophic, experience prolonged ice cover and also are prone to both summer and winter fish kills. Right now, we currently aerate twenty-two water bodies across the province and we continue to expand this project by exploring new opportunities for new aeration sites to provide more angling opportunities and Little Bear Lake is one of these new water body, candidate The benefits of aerating a lake, it enables fish to overwinter, grow to larger sizes, increases angling opportunities and satisfies anglers. It also improves water quality by reducing the biological oxygen demand. In the winter, we use surface aerators, it's our primary method to aerate. So basically what they are, they're floating pumps, they propel, they produce a fountain that propel water in the air and that the droplets of water that are suspended in the air absorb with the atmospheric oxygen in the form of dissolved oxygen. So the aerators circulate the water in the, the lake's upper column by drawing up the warmer, less oxygenated, oxygenated water to the surface where it is aerated. This warm circulating water prevents the ice formation in the affected area, leaving an open area called the polinia. This is also an area where oxygen is exchanged with the atmosphere. So surface aeration is one of the most effective and affordable methods for aerating overwintering fish. However, with the, the open water and the thin ice prevented by, or produced by the pumps, this creates public safety hazard, which makes ACA liable and punishable under the criminal code of Canada. Oops, sorry. Okay, there we go. The law states that basically anyone who produces an opening in the ice is legally responsible to guard that hazard to prevent people from falling in, in the, by, falling in by accident, or they also have to let them know about the hazard, that the hazard exists. So to comply with this law, the government of Alberta developed the Lake Aeration's Project Public Warning and Protection Requirements Policy. This policy outlines the provincial procedures required for mitigating the public hazards associated with winter aeration. So at each of one of our sites, we adhere to these provincial requirements by installing fencing around the opening of ice as well as installing signs on the fence, installing thin ice signs at the access points. We post regular local public media ads online and in local newspapers and also we conduct routine site safety checks just to ensure all of our safety mitigations are functional. Due to the high, highly productive nature of most stocked water bodies in Alberta, fish kills are an ongoing issue. Each year, we're inundated with multiple requests to take on new aeration projects. This isn't feasible because of our limitations to resources and our funds. To optimize our aeration efforts, we have a selection process that screens water bodies to determine their suitability for aeration. So basically, we assess each lake using the following criteria and evaluate its physical, biological and chemical components, investigate logistics, develop and operate the site and identify potential project partnerships. Once a water body is identified as a candidate, we monitor winter DOs and temperature levels for up to two, up to three years to determine if aeration can improve fish survival. Jumping ahead here, sorry. So that's, that's the criteria there we use to evaluate, I won't get into it, there's a lot there. Okay, so where does Little Bear Lake measure with, with this selection process? So first, in 2018, Little Bear Lake was identified by the Alberta Environment and Parks as a priority water body to aerate. Shortly after we began the selection process, we, we started monitoring winter DO at the lake. Actually, I just want to acknowledge that the Cold Lake Hatchery staff, Harvey Pollack and his crew, they were the ones that were going onsite and monitoring the, the DOs for us, so. But anyway, so Little Bear Lake's proving to be a suitable candidate as it offers one of the only few stocked fisheries in the region, it's an ideal size and depth to aerate, it offers year-wide angling, sorry, offers year-wide angling opportunities, it attracts anglers locally, provincially, and I just found out today from, from Marty, from across the, the country. There are, is public access at two points, one at Marty's property and another on Crown land. It's, it's not ideal, it needs some work. The, the project development costs are relatively low and there are potential project partnership So Little Bear Lake is a, it's a unique fishery to the region. Like I said before, it's one of a few stocked trout fisheries in, in the region. It's stocked with three different trout species, rainbow trout, tiger trout and brook trout. And Craig Copeland just informed me that this is pretty rare for the province as there's maybe about five percent of, of other water bodies that have this, this diversity of stocked fish in there. So just to show how heavily vested the Cold Lake Hatchery is, they stock tens of thousands of fish in the, in the lake each year and it's, it's significant. So just, they've been, they've been stocking for, ongoing for many years, but the, the table above is just the snapshot of the stocking records in the last six years. So in the last six years, there's been over a hundred and twenty-two thousand catchable-sized trout that have been stocked in that lake, which equate to about over three hundred thousand dollars, so. It's pretty significant. Covering the, the winter or the water quality data, the monitoring that we, we just completed in 2021, it shows that DO levels dropped below the three milligram per liter threshold to varying degrees in all three sampling years. So if you're looking at the graph, it's just basically all those points to the left of that dashed vertical line there, I won't get into that, but it just goes to show that yes, there is pretty uninhabitable conditions for, for trout survival. This trend indicates that once ice forms in December, dissolved oxygen levels drop considerably beyond thresholds by January and February. This data suggests that Little Bear Lake experiences a higher rate of fish kills than previously expected and that aeration would be helpful in overwintering fish. Just to give you an idea of what it would take to follow through with the cost or developing this and operating, the costs to develop the site would be about thirty-six thousand dollars and this includes power line construction, power infrastructure and other aeration infrastructure and also the aeration and safety equipment. To the annual operating costs, which include the electrical and the thin ice media ads, will run roughly about nine thousand dollars. And just to note that Marty Stevens, who's in the audience today, he has granted us permission to construct the power line and run the aeration system from his property. Okay, so this is the Corporate Partners in Conservation Program. It's our way of acknowledging companies who play a key role in supporting our work to conserve Alberta's fish, wildlife and habitat. Our committed partners help us to stretch our collective resources and make a real difference today and from years to come. Currently, there are ten municipalities that are corporate partners on various conservation projects and seven municipalities are partners in aeration projects to varying degrees. So in the selection process, partnership opportunities, they're, they're weighted pretty heavily and it would score pretty high in the selection process for Little Bear Lake, which would increase the likelihood of ACA developing an aeration system at that site. Currently, we're seeking project partnerships to support the project. So far, Cold Lake Fish Hatchery has offered to continue their support by monitoring water quality if we continue with the aeration system and assist with safety site inspections. The local fish and game clubs have also reached out to ACA for some sort of project support. And I guess in closing, my question to the council is, would the MD be interested in entering into a project partnership to support the Little Bear Lake Aeration Project?
Thank you. Okay, councillor Fadav.
I, I love this, like to me, this, you know, checks off a lot of boxes, you know, with, with our recent two months of ups and downs with this COVID thing is a great way to get out there with the families and do stuff together and, and it also checks off the, the old mental health part of it as well, where, you know, we get out of the house and we do something outside. But so in regards to the twenty-two water bodies in Alberta, how many are in the Lakeland area is one question, and then with the minimum three meter, three point five meter ideal situation for, for next water body, is future plans on lakes in the areas, is there going to be any future plans for the same type initiative that we're seeing here? Thank you.
Yes, so to answer your first question, there is no other water bodies in the Lakeland area that would be aerated by ACA. There's a lot around the Edmonton area, Calgary area and Peace River area for sure. We try to pick locations that are within a close distance to our office to make it easier for us to maintain and install and just do all that kind of stuff, operate. And yeah, if there is potential for other opportunities within the area that meet, meet And yeah, if there is potential for other opportunities within the area that meet our criteria, I think, yeah, there is, there's definitely potential for expansion in this area.
Yeah, I'm Peter here. And I just wanted to add a little bit to that, I mean, very good question. It's something we actually grapple with quite a bit. And if you look at the distribution of our aeration lakes, there's some history to it. They historically have been located close to where our original offices are. So we have a few in the Peace River region, because we had an office there, some in the Rocky Mountain area, because we had an office there, and then Ledbridge. When it comes to distance, locate, further location from Edmonton like this, it becomes a little more challenging, especially given that most of our monitoring is done in the winter. And one of the great things about this Little Bear Lake is that the Cold Lake Hatchery has been very, very supportive and has been willing to do the winter oxygen and temperature monitoring for us. Otherwise, it'd have been very more, more difficult, it should be more challenging for us to, to engage in this particular one. And like Brad mentioned, we currently have 22 lakes. We always open to ideas of taking on more, but of course, logistics always comes in, and we cannot keep increasing it indefinitely. That's when it becomes very important where we get local support, where we can get local partnership. I think an area that is going to drive where we locate more of our aeration projects. A good example is Jackfish Lake. Yeah. Peanut, yeah, Peanut Lake.
Peanut Lake in Barhead.
Yeah, Peanut Lake in Barhead and Jackfish Lake, which is close by here. And in Jackfish, for example, it, it has a history. The, the lake had been aerated in the past, and it was discontinued because water level was too low. What has come back, the county wanted to aerate again. To be honest, it does not occur by depth and other criteria, it doesn't quite meet our criteria. But the county wanted to do it, so we were willing to work with them and partnership. They have taken on much of the work, we have supplied them with the equipment, and they're going to be doing the installation, so Brad is actually going there tomorrow. And in Peanut Lake is a similar situation. We are going to start install all the equipment this, how soon, in a week or two?
Uh, yeah.
Yeah.
Early next month.
Yeah. And then their contribution, the council's contribution is that they're going to take over and do all the DO monitoring and do all the equipment installation in subsequent years, and they'll be contributing to the electrical power. So going, going forward, it looks like areas where we're going to be getting this kind of support will make our life a lot easier. I'm not saying we would not if we don't have the support, but if, if we go, when you go to the criteria, partnership is at the bottom. That features quite strongly in where we locate new aeration.
Councilor Shane, and then Swiger.
Yeah, thank you for that presentation. Yeah, in past conversations with the Mayor Copeland there and, and his regular job with the Fish Hatchery, we discussed stuff like feedstock or fish that we can be used for, for growing their stocks. Is this lake going to be used for that or just for stocking and fishing?
It's going to be, it's strictly recreational.
For?
For just angling.
Just angling?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, I thought it would be.
As, as far as I know.
Yeah, it would just be for consumption or for recreation purposes.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Okay, Councilor Swiger.
Yeah, just excited about that, it's a perfect location, I think, too, because it's, for those who don't know, you know, it's on 897, just kind of south of the Fish Hatchery. And, you know, it's a little lake that really has not a lot of development around, which would be kind of nice to keep it that way as a, as a nice little fishing lake. So I'd, I'd be more than happy to try to support this one. I would just ask yearly kind of costs, how are they covered? And what would they be kind of yearly to operate that?
So I guess that would all kind of fall onto whatever the, the partnership would be. But yeah, so I pretty much laid out like what the operational costs are after the development of, of the, of the site. It'll be roughly, the kicker, the, the bulk of the cost is probably electricity and the advertisement costs. It doesn't include your manpower or any kind of vehicles or anything like that, so. So I would say roughly about $10,000 per, per year.
Questions? Okay, I, I too like the project. You know, we, we've spent a lot of money on recreation in other areas, and I don't think we've paid too much attention to our anglers and hunters in the area. So Little Bear is a, is a gem of a lake, and the synergy that we see all, obviously with the hatchery being right there, that's a bonus. My question would be on other partnerships. I saw a number of different corporations that were there. Do we know if there's any local industry players who have been approached on this one?
At this point, no. I think there was some interest way back when with, I think, Syncrude. I think it was in the 90s or something like that, they wanted to develop access and, and it just didn't work or something like that.
Actually, let me clarify that it was Imperial.
Okay.
Mr. Reeve, I'll just ask, you've got a sort of total estimated cost of $44,000. That's not really a big ask, and then the Reeve is kind of asking who else may partner with it, but I mean, I'd like to kind of know what, you know, I don't think that's a lot of money to ask for from a council, but I don't know what everybody else thinks, so we could maybe even talk about making a motion today to kind of fund this.
Any other input? Councilor Jubenville.
Well, I think it's quite a bit of money. It is, but it is, it is a nice project, and I think it's an important project. I certainly would like to see possibly other partners take part, but yeah, I think what you guys are doing is, is absolutely necessary, and it's, it is a good plan, so. But yeah, other partners would, would be definitely nice.
Okay, if you guys would have a list of like some potential partners that you guys would think of?
Well, Imperial stands out for sure.
Yeah.
They're close by, they have shown some, definitely community involvement. There's been a change over the years, obviously, but I'm just wondering about, either we can approach them or, or you can. But I guess the question would be for council is, would you be looking at doing a partnership with, on, on outside? We obviously know that the Fish Hatchery are going to do the, some of the, the labor involved. The annual operational costs, that would be a question to be answered as well. The power coming in, has Atco said they are willing to be a partner?
Um, they have not mentioned anything about partnering up at all, but they have, we definitely given us a quote on, in construction.
Okay.
Yeah.
Councilor Swiger.
No, Mr. Reeve, I'd maybe suggest that if this council shows interest, that maybe we write some letters to Imperial and others and say, we'd like, we'd love to partner with you on this. Now, Council, Council of Jubenville says it's expensive, but $44,000, like, the cost of the fish that they showed over the last bunch of years was well, well over that, so. It's not really that much money. And it sure, sure brings a lot more people, you know, to this area to go fishing, so I'd love to see it.
Councilor Jubenville.
Yeah, so, but one of the things I think that, that needs to be answered is also the annual, the annual operational cost, right? Because that is something that is going to be ongoing. This is not a, this is not a one-year thing, right? This is something, this little lake is going to have to be aerated every winter, right?
That's correct, yes.
Yeah, so I'm thinking that's, I, I'm definitely in favor of the project, I'm in favor of supporting it, and I'm thinking that there just needs to be a couple of questions answered as far as the operational costs. Is that something that this council is willing to foot the bill for annually? And, yeah, but I'm, I'm in favor of it. I, I think at this point, I, I would make a motion to accept it as information, and that it's something that comes forward to, immediately to the, to the new council.
Yeah.
Yeah. I just wanted to, I'm glad you brought up that Imperial thing, it's actually crossed my day some time back, and it's something we're going to, we may, you and I can chat about who follows up on it, but definitely, this is, this is one that I think we should, we should be talking to. In the past, most of the oil companies have been pretty good with us.
Yeah.
They like to engage in some of these community and environmentally friendly type of activities, so I'm, I'm pretty sure.
Okay.
It would be a lead to follow. The second thing is, in our, in our spirit, typically partnerships often attract one another. So if, if we have a necessary partnership, it usually makes it easier for other people to, to get on board as well.
Sure. Councilor Fidev, and then the CEO.
Yeah, there's a motion on table, I don't want to speak against the motion. I think I'm, I'm in favor as well, we seek out other partnerships and we let the next council make that, that important decision.
Okay, Councilor Swiger.
And Mr. Reeve, so, yeah, the, the motion on the floor is to accept as information, but I would either add to that motion that we do write a letter to some of the oil companies and show our interest and, and sort of keep the thing going, otherwise, you know, a motion to accept for information really doesn't get us anywhere. So I'd like to see us maybe step forward with a, with a letter to our, our oil companies if we're interested.
Mr. CEO.
I think, Mr. Reeve, members of council, we certainly can reach out. My recommendation to council would be that any of the funding to this gets put off to the 2022 budget deliberations, which are, we're already in preparation for them. We certainly can have our manager of fish, I'm not sure who that is today, but we certainly can reach out as part of our budget preparation. Find out if there are partners, we can certainly work with the ACA in terms of defining a bit, a bit better what those operational costs might be, and if there are some partners interested, we'll certainly bring that forward as part of the 2022 budget deliberation, which, which start literally with council in just a little over a month.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Jubenville, are you okay with adding to the, the motion in regards to having administration do the legwork on this one?
Yeah, that's exactly what, what my motion was.
Okay.
Yeah, so just, yeah, no, that, that's good. And, and I think another thing to consider is that possibly that there is, there is work in kind that the municipality could do for access to this lake, so.
Yes, yeah.
Anyway, that's the information we need. But yes, I'm absolutely in favor of that.
Yeah, that, that launch on the, on the highway side is a piece of work. So if, if we could get some clearance to do even a little bit there, it, it won't take much. Okay, let's, we have a motion to, go ahead, do you want to bring that one up there, please?
Okay.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, guys.
Sure, go ahead, Marty. Okay.
Because everybody that comes, I ask them whether it's from, if to get an idea.
Yeah. Yeah, for those who don't know, Marty has been a, an incredible host to all sorts of anglers over the years, and he allows people to drive across his grass and rate, to launch right from his place, so. Okay, that sounds good. Okay. All right, we can call the vote. That is carried, and we will take a 10-minute recess. All right, welcome back. We are down to still Environmental and Protective Services, and this is the Public Safety Quarterly Report.
Good morning again, Mr. Reeve, members of council. I wonder if we can put the quarterly report up on the, on the screen. This report's going to carry on from April to August. We missed our, our second quarter, so we've got a sort of a blending of, I think it's five months that we've got. All right. So starting, I'm not going to comment on each and every slide, there's quite a few slides here, but the information is broken down by ward and by region within the ward, and also types of offenses that we're dealing with, the types of vehicles that we're dealing with, et cetera. So as we go through it, I'll, I'll sort of explain what we're looking at here. So these are the, all right, so activities. We're looking at provincial written warnings, we're 627. Provincial tickets were 104, bylaw tickets, 18, unsightly's were six, and grand total of 755 events that we looked after. Now, when we talk about traffic tickets and provincial warnings and that kind of thing, we have to remember that the, the open for business only took place, I think, early July, late, late June, so a little bit of this is, is cut off as well. We didn't have that many activities before that. On to the next slide. So the number of reports, again, regulatory bylaws were 196, provincial statutes were 76. That would include everything from littering to off-highway vehicles, that kind of thing as well. Rural crime prevention reports as well, we're coming in, emergency response, criminal code. In cases where you see a criminal code report, it's simply just rendering assistance to the RCMP for impaireds and things of that nature. On to the next slide here. Commercial vehicle inspection results. It's a good portion of what we do is commercial vehicles. I've got 254 warning, written warnings, and 31 tickets issued. And then on this, on the left side, you'll see basically what those were for. Majority are going to be equipment violations, loose loads, maybe some issues with tires and that kind of thing. Again, generally, they're all equipment-related. Over to the next slide, please, overview of activities. Now, these are the types of vehicles that we dealt with primarily. So you'll see that the vast majority are either passenger vehicles or commercial vehicles. And then the others are going to be off-highway vehicles, motorcycles, rentals, et cetera. Farm vehicles are only 3% of what we typically deal with. Next slide, we're looking at patrols by ward, this is Ward 1. So we've got 740 in the Fort Cantaria, Gurneeville, 307. I won't read all of the, the community areas out loud, but if there's any questions or comments, I will certainly take those. And hearing nothing, the next slide, tickets and war, and written warnings that were issued in Ward 1. Again, 160 of the total were for traffic-related issues under the TSA. Commercial vehicle regulations as well were, was another major, well, significant category, and the rest were sort of dwindling off there as well.
Go ahead.
So do ATVs fall in the Traffic Safety Act? Like quads, someone, is that?
Through the Reeve, typically, no, they're going to be under the Off-Highway Vehicle Act. Now, you can violate some Traffic Safety Act offenses on an ATV, but we like to associate those with the Off-Highway Vehicle Act if we can.
Councilor Fidev.
Good morning. In regards to tickets and warnings, could you tell us if the Sheriff's Office informs you or your department? office informs you or your department as a, when they're gonna have a campaign going on? I've seen in the last week or two that they've been doing lots of stops for safety checks and mostly on trucks and things like that in La Corie, Iron River, some places, just, just around our area? Do they, you know, do they kind of let you guys know on that?
So through the reef, no. The answer would be no unless we're gonna be entering into a partnership with them to conduct some type of enforcement. There are some national and provincial programs that are run on a known weekend or like, for example, October, there's, there's an impaired driving campaign that, you know, we're not necessarily part of. We can partner up and, and do some of our own enforcement activities in partnership with the RCMP. So we know when those dates are. There's Road Safety Week in May. We know what, what that is. As far as some of those organized programs, but for ad hoc things that they just come in on their own, normally wouldn't typically.
Thanks. Well, I seen him pull over a gentleman with an unsafe load just outside of Coal Lake and there was a sheriff's vehicle as well as a, as a city constable, sorry, constable that was there as well. So that's kind of, the reasoning for my question is I thought maybe there was a blitz or a joint campaign on that.
Yeah, through the reef, there could have been a partnership that we weren't a part of. If it was closer to Coal Lake, that's possible. But more than likely, I imagine somebody might have just been driving by and for, for officer's safety or to offer that, they'll pull over. That's not unusual to sort of back each other up that way.
Okay, thanks.
Just to follow up on that one, there was a, a recent blitz nearby where everyone being pulled over was asked to, to actually blow. Have any, that, that seems like an odd thing to be doing, especially during, during COVID times. But do you have any insight into that one?
So, Mr. Reeve, council, there is a program called MAS. We don't, that's the acronym for it. You know, at our level, we don't do that. We don't have authority under the criminal code. But there is a program that's probably been in place now for closing, you know, two years, where they can preemptively, the police can preemptively ask for a sample or demand a sample. There used to be a requirement that the police used to need reasonable suspicion to believe that you had alcohol in your system. And once they had that suspicion, they could do a breath demand roadside. And then if you failed that, you'd be brought back to the office for the actual exam. They, they've removed that requirement for reasonable suspicion so they can literally ask anybody they want. In fact, my wife was pulled over for something in Redwater just a few weeks ago and, and came home and asked me if that was the way things are. And I said, it's, yeah, so it's out there.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
And once again, the acronym is MAS, M-A-S-S, if anybody wants to do any research on that. Carrying on with Ward, just still in Ward 1 here. Again, more, more of the types of reports that are coming in, regulatory bylaws, provincial statutes. The numbers are all there by location as well. Fort Cantaria, Gurneeville area, everything's broken down. So I won't read everything out loud, but if there's any questions, we'll, we'll field them. The next slide will be Ward 2. And patrols, 242. Again, this is just from April till, till the end of August. North Shore Heights, Highway 660 area, wholesale. You can see where, where the bulk of our patrols are taking place. And then by type, crime prevention patrols in general are 529, crime prevention targeted. Difference being, again, we've got for targeted patrols, we're looking at that 30-minute requirement for the officers to be in a particular area if they're, if they're targeting a particular type of offense. Complaint investigations are 40, campgrounds were 33. Again, just in, in Ward 2, vacant home checks were seven. And next slide, please. And then by type, so this is tickets under the TSA and, and other. So these are the types of offenses that we're seeing. So 55 under the Traffic Safety Act, commercial vehicle regs, there's four, MD bylaws, four. And then again, at the bottom of the slide, it's by area. So it looks like we were fairly busy on the Highway 660 area and, and that neck of the woods up there. And hearing no questions, we'll just go to the next slide, please. Again, these are not tickets or warnings. These are the files that are coming in, incoming. So regulatory bylaws were 30, provincial statutes were 11, crime prevention, three, criminal code. So something that that will be, you know, we've got a suspicious vehicle in the area. Can you guys make patrols? We'll start a file and we'll actually do a BOLO, be on the lookout for, and we'll assign officers to go to that location and, and spend some time. Once again, at the bottom of the slide, broken down by area, spending some time on Moose Lake East subdivision and North Shore Heights. And hearing no questions, we'll go on to Ward 3. Patrols by area, French Year was 244, Highway 660 area, 102, Goodrich, again, 93, and, and so on down the list. And again, by type, so crime prevention general, crime prevention targeted. Once again, those are 30-minute patrols at minimum, campground patrols, complaint investigations, 25, et cetera. And hearing no questions, we'll go to the next slide. Tickets and written warnings. Ward 3, 54 were provincial acts and regulations under the Traffic Safety Act, 14 were commercial vehicles. And then you'll see the numbers dwindle off as we get into the less.
Deputy Reeve.
Mr. Reeve, Commissioner Ginholfi, thank you. Are the majority of these tickets and warnings, warnings, written warnings, like you have them categorized into one, right?
Yes, through the reef, yes, we do. And my thought behind that was simply because when we're dealing with the public, whether we're writing a ticket or whether we're giving a written warning, we're interacting, we're teaching, we're, you know, we're having positive discussions and contact. So to me, it, it was meaningful to have those, you know, mean something. So they're included in that as well. But we do have it broken down as well into tickets and warnings, perhaps on another slide.
Okay.
Once again, by area at the bottom of the slide. And the next slide is the types of files and reports that are coming in. Ward 3, we had 14 regulatory bylaw files, seven provincial statutes, requests for assistance. That can really be a lot of different things. So if it doesn't fit into a nice category, it usually goes into a request for assistance that we can, that we can catalog it there. And then again, at the bottom of the slide, broken down by area. The next slide has to do with Glendon. So we don't really have to spend a bunch of time there, I guess, given that we have an arrangement with Glendon. But if there's any questions, I can certainly answer them. And the next slide gets into Ward 4. There we go. La Corie, Lassard, Dupree, Iron River. Spent a fair bit of time in this ward. There's lots of activity there as we know. And then at the bottom, we've got the types of matters that we're dealing with, crime prevention general, crime prevention targeted, industry patrols through the La Corie Resource Road. And then we've got some campground patrols again. I won't get into all of that, but I will take questions. Ward 4, the next slide, tickets and warnings. So we've got 49 Traffic Safety Acts, got 11 commercial vehicle, excuse me, commercial vehicle regulations, and then nine commercial vehicle safety regulations, dimensions and weights. We've got lots of commercial vehicle activity in this particular ward. At the bottom of the slide, you see that most of our activities in the La Corie area and Lassard and Iron River. The next slide, further breakdown of the types of files that we're getting in, just by the reports now, not to do with tickets, but these are the, the files, the complaints that are coming in. Nine of them were regulatory bylaw, provincial statutes, eight, crime prevention were eight, and then assist general public, again, something that can't fit into another category. Moving on to Ward 5.
Excuse me, to the reef and.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Louis. Just a question. I had a oil hauler truck, I think what they said was blew a front tire on Highway 55 and went into one of our drainage ditches and was found down there in, in the evening. There was no, there was no services called, no police, no ambulance, no nothing. But I'm just wondering if there's a, a law or a rule that states they have to call somebody since the truck has loaded with diesel fuel for the, for its own truck and the tank, I don't know what was in the tank, but there was no services called or no reports made on that. I was just wondering what, what the rules are on that.
Through the reef, to Counsel Dushay. So a couple of things come to mind. So whenever there's a collision, regardless of dangerous goods or, you know, what's on board, if it's over $2,000, it has to be reported under the Traffic Safety Act. Does it matter unless it's on private property? But if it's on public land, it has to be reported. Secondly, if he hit a, you know, entered into the ditch and maybe struck a culvert or something, one of our approaches, maybe there's some MD infrastructure there that might have been damaged. So there would be a requirement for that reporting. Now, as far as the dangerous good side of things, if he wasn't leaking, I'm not aware of any requirement to make a report. But if there is a leak, then you certainly do have a 1-800 number that they have to phone into the province environment and get some direction on, on who to call.
Okay, yeah, it's just that the truck was nosedive right in the bottom of that drainage ditch, about 15 feet in the hole there. They had to get a big four-wheel-drive tractor to tow it out of there. So just wondering, why no services were called in for that to keep an eye on those guys. But just, just a question. Thank you, Louis.
You're welcome. Next slide, Ward 5, patrols by area. So we've got lots of activity in Ardmore. It's one of our bigger hamlets, of course, Highway 882 area, Riverhurst area, Crane Lake, and so on. You can see further down the line where the bulk of our patrols are. General Patrol, 644, crime prevention patrols, that was based on kind of intelligence that we get in where, where the patrols needed that are 30 minutes in length or longer. 354, campgrounds 145, industry, et cetera, down the lines. Tickets, written warnings in, in Ward 5, 122. Commercial vehicle safety regulations were 15. Commercial vehicle, I'm sorry, under Schedule 2 were 15, and then regular was, was 10, and then so on. You can see up the list. And then Ward 5 reports. You can see that regulatory bylaws make up the bulk of what we were doing in Ward 5. Crime prevention was eight, provincial statute seven, and so on. And finally, Ward 6. Okay, so patrols, Coal Lake Airport area, 162. Township Road 630, it's a very busy road, 131. Highway 97, Cherry Grove area, 93. French Bay Campground, we started doing patrols out to French Bay as well this year. Crime prevention general, 370. Crime prevention targeted were 51. Quite a few campground patrols, vacant home checks were actually quite popular in this ward as well, 23.
Counselor Fadav.
In regards to the emergency response, could you maybe clarify that a little bit more? What does that, what does that mean? Cause I know there was two sent out to French Bay Campgrounds, and I just wondered if that was a more of an emergency response on their part. Do you know anything in regards to how that one works?
Like emergen, sorry, through the reef, to Counsel Fadav, what exactly are you referring to?
So in, in my, my report, it's a little different than yours. It says, Ward 6 reports, emergency response 2. And then by area, it goes down below and it says French Bay Campground. And that's where the, the 2 is on.
And is it on, it's on this slide, but this slide is different from the one that you have?
Yeah, cause, yeah, it's a little. It identifies, right there you go.
There you go. Emergency response 2. It's an interesting one because as council knows, we just sought that emergency response capability. So through the reef to council, I will find out what that means.
Sounds good.
Get back.
Uh, thank you. And then just one more question regards to the patrolling of Township Road 630 in Baywood area. You guys do that on a regular basis or is that, or, or all depends how much time you have? Cause I still have some, some concerns in regards to some of the speeds that people are going through, especially we're having a fairly busy campground that's on, on Baywood Road. Where just the other day, I was driving on that road, coming back from football practice, not me, but my son. And there was two vehicles, one was in front of me, one was behind me. Going up one of the hills, I was doing 85 and I got passed like, like nobody's business in a, in a grandpa's sports car. And the reason I know it was a grandpa's sports car is, you know, it's, it's whatever. But anyway, so this guy was going up a hill, around a corner on, on a solid line and right before the campground pull off. So he must have been doing 120, 130. So again, and I see that on a regular basis, I, I question the safety of our ratepayers and, and everybody else in, in place, especially there.
Through the reef to Council Fadav, I, I understand your concern. That's a busy highway. There's lots of residential approaches. It's a nice stretch of pavement as well. And the speed's only 80 kilometers an hour on that road. So it would be very easy for somebody to get, to get up to speed and, and try to pass vehicles and that. So we're aware that that's a problem. But I'm hearing this information now and, and we can certainly adjust our patrols to, to meet the, the demand. If you're getting complaints from, from your ratepayers and that kind of thing, there's no issue with that. We can certainly make those, those changes.
Just a question. I just, yeah, it's very common.
And one thing I'll add to that too is, you know, if, if a ratepayer or, you know, a citizen sees somebody doing something like that, especially passing on a solid line, getting a plate number will allow us to ticket the RO if we wanted to. It wouldn't necessarily be the driver, but sometimes a ticket to mom and dad will prove a point with, with the lad, I guess, if I can make a pun. But, so we can do that. So as long as there's a plate obtained and then the what, who, when, where, why, we can follow up and, and still deal with that.
Yeah, it was a, it was a pretty silly move because the, the plate number was a personalized plate number, right? So very, very distinctive. So yeah, it was, anyways, that's okay. Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll just, let me just catch up to the slides here. I think is where we're at. There we go. Thank you. Any questions on this, on this slide? Moving on, so the commercial vehicle inspections, location where most of them are taken, oops. The majority of our inspections are taking place on Highway 892, Ward 5, La Corie area as well, near the Public Works Yard and Building, Ward 1. And I don't know if we've got it up yet here. Ardmore area, Highway 659, and then it really kind of tails off from there. The majority of our commercial vehicle inspections are Ward 5, Ward 4, Ward 1 in Fort Kent and the Bear Trap areas, as well as Ardmore. Total number of commercial vehicle inspections over the period that we're discussing, 201. And then the next slide deals with the vacant home check program. Ward 1, Muriel Lake area, we had 24 vacant home checks. Cherry Grove, 16. Once again, I won't read everything out loud, but the numbers are there. Grand total of 66 vacant home checks were conducted throughout And next slide. These deal with our crime prevention patrols targeted. 29% of our crime prevention patrols are targeted, meaning they're 30 minutes or longer in duration. And then 5,047 total. And then, of course, the breakdown by ward as well. So these numbers are, are mined out of our database right now. It's called Report Exec, which is, it's a records management system that we have. There's There's a lot of time spent by the officers inputting the information. I'm really trying to find ways, uh, through GPS software that we can get some of this information automatically so that we're not tying up our people inputting data. So I think you'll see, uh, likely as we move forward. We do have a tightened GPS system. However, in order for us to be able to get the data out, we have to do some geo fencing within the MD and our admin support's been working really hard to get some of that done. Mailboxes, schools, school zones, um, entering, exiting communities by the same vehicle within a certain amount of time. It'll give us how many times it's been visited. So much of this we're trying to automate so that we can free up the officers to, to spend more time on the road. And hopefully improve the quality of the data as well. And then I think we're getting close to the end here. Rural crime prevention patrols by ward. I'm sorry about the, the typing here. I know it's, it's hard to read. And next slide, please. Again, we can pause if there's any questions.
Counsel Fadav.
Uh, in regards to Canusa Ridge, uh, is that our, kind of our norm? Is the girl visit there once, once a? The, okay, so how many months are you reporting? Quarterly, right?
April till the end of August.
So we have rural crime prevention patrols by ward and Canusa Ridge only shows us one. Since it was an open, uh, construction zone and things like that, I, I thought maybe we would possibly increase that a little bit? Uh, but that's just me sitting here. I, I don't know, but is that something you kind of work with together with, uh, Parks and Rec at all?
Uh, through the reef to Counsel Fadav. Uh, that kind of ties into what I just mentioned, uh, the doll, the data quality. I want to make sure that we're, we're really capturing what we're doing. Uh, I'm certain that we've been out there more than once. I know I've personally been out there at least two or three times. So, uh, although I don't.
That's not fishing trips.
I don't enter my own data. I have to be honest. But, uh, you know, we do have it geo fenced now. I, I know it's done because, uh, I gave, I gave, uh, our, our support staff a list of ones I want it done right away and that was one of the ones that I want it done. So moving into the, into the winter, we should have a lot more. And I'm confident that that number's not accurate. That's why we're, we're moving into this, uh, GPS-based geo fencing solution. So.
Thanks.
And then, uh, the next couple of slides deal with our School Resource Officer Program and we're almost finished here.
Okay.
Uh, number of activity types. Uh, so we've got several programs. That I can take questions on any of them if you like. But, uh, some of those programs have sort of sub areas underneath them, Right Choices being one of them. So thirty-nine activities were re- were reported. School visits are all listed there as well, drop-ins, uh, to the school. CSI is another really popular one where we do the fingerprinting and the photographing and kind of an introduction to law enforcement for the youth. There was obviously a gap here over the summer. And, uh, you know, before that, um, there was problems getting into the schools as we all know. So these numbers are obviously far removed from what we're going to see now. As a matter of fact, I submitted a weekly report here last week that had two hundred and twenty-six sessions already planned for, uh, for this year and another, I think it was a hundred and fifty-six or a hundred and sixty that I did for, for this week as well. So we've got lots of sessions being planned. Any questions on the SRO program, I'd be happy to take them. Otherwise, that really is the end of my report.
Counsel Drubinville, you had a question?
Yeah, I guess my question, uh, Mr. Reeve is, um, is like the numbers. Um, cause I look at, um, I always thought that I was living in one of the most law-abiding wards. And then I look at your numbers and, uh, it doesn't appear to be that way. So, uh, I'm just wondering if you're spending too much time in Ward One and you should be spending more time in Ward Six. Uh, so, so, yeah, so anyway, like I just wonder how do you arrive at these numbers? And is there a lot of, uh, like from the crime provincial general, those numbers? Is there something that is just, keeps happening over and over again or what's, um, do we have bad habits there?
Through the reef to Counsel Drubinville. Ward One is always going to be, um, represented a little bit extra, I think, because of the fact that we're housed here. So it's much easier for us to be on our way to, to get somewhere and then get distracted by something or, or something comes in. So in many ways, most communities, I'm, I'm reflecting back on my time with the RCMP. They liked having the police detachment in their community because it meant that, uh, you had more officers leaving at least for shift and then coming back at the end of their shift. So that might be a positive way to look at it. If you want to put a spin on this, that, that you're getting a little bit more attention maybe than, than the others.
Deputy Reeve.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve. I just wanted to say, Mr. Gandolfi, that all roads go through Ward One and that's the reason.
And, and I can add one thing too. So I, I mentioned that we're going to a GPS-based system. So the numbers are actually worse now because
Yes.
every minute we can account for. So it's going to be worse.
Okay, no other questions?
Anyway, good job. Thank you.
To have a motion to accept this as, uh, information. Okay, Deputy Reeve, uh, we can call the vote.
Members of council, thank you.
Okay, vote by hands, all in favor? That's carried. Thank you. Uh, okay, next one is the sale of public safety shotguns.
My apologies. No problem. Just go ahead. All right. So, uh, the MD currently owns three Remington eight seventy shotguns that have been deployed by Public Safety in the past, but are no longer being used as the, as we do not have the authority to do so through the Soul Gen. On August eleventh, twenty twenty-one, during a regular meeting at council, council directed administration not to proceed with seeking enhanced authorities for the MD of Bonneville regarding the use of shotguns. Uh, the Director of Public Safety entered into negotiations with a prospective purchaser, uh, the County of Vermillion River Number Twenty-four Public Safety for the three shotguns and approvals being sought from council to dispose of our shotguns through private sale. Uh, the, uh, benefits of divesting ourselves from the, the shotguns is, is quite simply if we're not going to use them, uh, it makes sense not to, not to maintain. Uh, there is some administrative backlog that we need to, to do, uh, to have these things on strength. So disadvantages would be that if there is ever a change in, uh, in thought from council that we would then have to go out and, and procure some new ones if, uh, there was ever a change.
Okay. Uh, we have the recommended action there. Uh, to proceed with the, uh, the sale of the, uh, three shotguns to the County of Vermillion River for the amount of two hundred and fifty dollars per shotgun. Do we have, uh, somebody wanting to make that motion? Counsel O'Shane?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, discussion? Okay, call the votes.
Just a question to the reef and Louis, were those pump, pump shotguns or semis or?
Through the reef to Counsel Dushane, they were standard law enforcement pump action eight seventies.
Oh, thanks.
Okay, very good. Uh, that is carried. Thank you. Next up, planning and community services.
Good morning, Mr. Reeve and counsel. So this is the RFD for the Canusu Ridge chairlift, uh, replacement. The green chairlift at Canusu Ridge, uh, resort is over forty years old and was approved for replacement in the twenty twenty-one budget. The total combined approved budget amount for this project is three million dollars. To meet timelines for the chairlift replacement to be completed and operational for the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three season, the project contract must be signed and the project commence by October first, twenty twenty-one. Through the open procurement process utilized for this project, the qualifying submission was three million four hundred thousand, four hundred and ninety-four thousand five hundred dollars. This includes the full replacement of the green chairlift and the partial removal of the existing chairlift with an add-on option of eleven thousand dollars five hundred for the bike hooks. This submission does not, however, include the following required items with their respective estimated costs. At a hundred and fifty thousand for design layout, engineering for grade and groundwork, forty thousand for geotechnical work, twenty thousand for survey work, a hundred thousand for electrical, four hundred thousand for grading groundwork, disposal of all components, uh, site safety requirements and access and others. The total additional funds for these, uh, and, uh, the additional four hundred thousand, uh, over the three million would be approximately one million dollars, one million two hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. Should the project be postponed further, the current quoted price will not be applicable and would also be expected to be much higher. Also, operational staff have indicated that prolonging the replacement of the green chairlift any longer will require significant maintenance costs too and replacement of essential components in excess of two hundred thousand to ensure it's safe operational for additional, for an additional year. However, with these replacements, um, they may null the current operational permits through the regulating body, ADERSA, which is the Alberta Elevating Devices, Amusement Ride Safety Association. And the current allowances, uh, allowance requirements under which the chairlift is able to continue operations due to its, its age. Basically it's grandfathered in under their, uh, requirements. ADERSA and the manufacturer also indicate a thirty-year life cycle for the chairlift of which this now exceeds by ten years. Further, it is also the recommendation of the manufacturer that when, when and if it's possible, uh, to first look at repairing and refurbishing costs because those are usually far, uh, less than the replacement. Or if there's a possibility to sell components of that chairlift to others, um, so that it could balance out some of the losses. However, the current recommendation is that the chairlift be replaced and used for scrap metal salvage as the option for refurbishing the chairlift and its cost will be equivalent to the replacement at this point. And it would still be on forty-year-old infrastructure and utilizing forty-year-old, um, components that may not need to be replaced at this time. So it does fall under the, uh, ADERSA, um, regulating body, um, and the Z ninety-eight code. The costs and source of the funding, uh, would be an additional funds of one million two hundred and sixteen thousand dollars, uh, would, should council wish to proceed with this replacement of the project. These funds would be sourced from the Equipment Replacement Reserve. Uh, the recommended action is that council approves the unbudgeted expenditure of one million two hundred and sixteen thousand dollars towards the replacement of the green chairlift to be funded from the Equipment Replacement Reserve.
Counsel Fadav.
I know we had a lot of discussion in regards to this, uh, to this lift and we also talked about getting rid of, uh, the old lift. I guess what I'm disappointed at is that I didn't catch the non, like getting rid of the old one, uh, in, in, in the bid. Cause we approved the old lift, correct? I mean, sorry, the new one. But we didn't approve the teardown of this one. Is that how it goes? Am I reading this right?
Yeah, no, there were, there was a portion that was missed, um, in the, uh, when it was first, uh, brought to council. Um, and that is removal of the chair and, uh, and some of this extra groundwork.
But yeah, there was quite a bit of discussion with that. So it just wasn't captured in the bid then or in the, the total costs involved and is that? I know you, you know, it was before your time and, uh, I don't want to give you extra gray hair on that, but I just, just want to see why, why it wasn't, why it wasn't, why that wasn't captured. Either way, I mean, we made the commitment, uh, as council to move that ahead and, uh, yeah, I just want to see what everybody else says, but I'm, I'm definitely in favor of moving ahead because, uh, it's going to cost us more money later on if we, if we pause it for a next year or two.
Yeah, the, uh, you know, the green chair is the main chair out there. Um, it's, uh, been around forever and, uh, um, going without it, uh, doesn't, uh, doesn't make a whole lot of sense. Uh, that's, uh, you know, two-thirds of your hill is, uh, inaccessible then. Yeah, I was curious to, to learn more about the, um, the bike hooks. I, that hasn't really come up before in regards to, uh, um, because that eludes to a bigger, bigger issue in, in getting into having bikes up at the top of the hill and.
Yeah, uh, through the reef, uh, and your question, that was included as an option. As we look to expand activities out there so that we have those numbers, um, available should we present to council and, and, uh, council decides to go down that road too for bike activities out there.
Is it an item that has to be added at this time? Is it part of the engineering or can it be simply bolt-on?
Yes, uh, through the reef, um, it's, it's just an add-on bolt-on, uh, component. So it's, it's, can be added at any point, but.
Okay. Okay, where's counsel going on this one?
Yeah, Mr. Reeve, I'll make the motion that we, uh, follow administration's, uh, recommended action and, and go with the purchase. And approve, uh, one, one point two one six million dollars toward that new chair. And just to clarify, I, I was kind of thinking maybe the bike lifts were part of that, but you're saying that's not included in that price?
Uh, that, uh, sorry, through the, the reef, um, that, uh, the eleven thousand, um, five hundred dollars is included in that price. So if, if council wished to take that out, by all means.
I mean, I'd, I'd just love to leave you there. We've, I know we've had discussions over the years about trying to enhance Canusu and make it into a four-season and, you know, lots of folks have said they'd love to be on the mountain bike out there. So I'd, I'd just rather leave it in there.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion to, to go ahead with a re- recommended action. Uh, any further discussion? Okay, we can call the vote. That is carried. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve and counsel.
Thank you. Uh, next up, corporate services. Oh, sorry, Ms. Seo, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve, members of council. Uh, this was a significant, uh, miss by administration and, uh, administration will strive to get better numbers to council on projects of this magnitude in the future.
Okay, thank you. Good morning, Ms. Mariasa.
Good morning, counsel. This morning I have for you the procurement policy, policy number C dash two B dash zero one two. The C just shows that it's a, it's a, it's a council policy in there. Administration is proposing an amendment to policy number C dash two B dot zero one two, the procurement policy. Administration has expanded on the policy to include more details regarding disqualifications under the section purchasing guidelines. The new wording to be included in the policy is in green and the words to be removed are in red. Could I please, as counsel, to open to page nine of the policy? Thank you.
Okay.
So I won't read through, um, the details, but this is actually legal wording that we received from our legal counsel, um, to be added to our procurement policy to safeguard the in- interest of, um, of the municipality when we are in a tendering or in any kind of procurement process. It sets out clearly what could cause a proponent to be disqualified. For example, inappropriate communication if they're in legal battle with us. It sets all the points out clearly and because this is a, an ongoing, we procure all throughout the year, it is necessary to bring it forward to council at this time to include these wording in the procurement policy.
Counselor Fideev.
Yeah, it's, it's very detailed. I, I quite like it. It covers pretty well everything that we're dealing with from TNU to Parks and Rec, right? It's, it's all, it's, it's pretty good.
So in the case of disqualification, when it comes to if there is litigation, does it have to be litigation within our municipality organization or could it be bordering municipalities that would come into play?
At this time, it would be, in this policy refers to litigation with us. If however we are aware of litigation with another municipality in a row, in, in a similar kind of procurement process that they involved in, so an example, say it's a tender for equipment and they've delivered to another municipality and now we are aware of the legal battle, I mean, evaluating the tender, we can make reference to that to say that this is, this is known. Unfortunately, sometimes we might just know that there's a legal battle, we may not know the why, and we cannot disqualify a proponent based on that.
No, I like it. I think this is one of those policies that council probably should read once a year because we, we quite often have questions about procurement, right? This is one to keep on the corner of debt, of the desk and handy for that purpose. I, I like the, the changes. Okay, do we have a motion? Counselor Jubenbaugh.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Reeve, that we accept this policy as presented.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, we can call the vote. That is carried, thank you. Next item is the municipal budget timeline.
As per section two four two of the Municipal Government Act, council must adopt an operating budget for each calendar year. It also states that council must adopt a capital budget for each calendar year and since, over the last few years, council is also required to have a financial plan and a capital plan, the capital plan for a five-year period and a financial plan for three-year period. So administration is now proposing that council schedule three full-day budget sessions to discuss the 2022 budget as well as the operating plans for 2022 to 2025, as well as schedule four public consultation sessions to obtain input into the budget. Last year, council had open houses to discuss the 2021 budget in Cherry Grove. A virtual session was held in here at council chambers and we also made, met with the public at Flat Lake Hall. We also would like this year that council schedule a one, one-hour budget question period at the beginning of the regular meeting of council on November 12th, 2021, so that if anyone wants to come into council chambers to ask questions off of council directly, they have that one-hour window before they, just in that meeting to address anything related to the budget. Attached is appendix B, which just provides timelines. You'll notice at this time that we, administration has not selected the locations for the public consultations to be held. We've just assigned dates at this time. The, the location of the public consultation is hop to council. We've also changed to have, on one of the days, to have a morning and afternoon session. Prior to now, we would go out in the evening, but just to be more inclusive of all kind, all our residents' time and being aware of all our residents' time, we're proposing that one be held in the morning and another one in the afternoon, actually on a Saturday as well. Previously, we've only held these on weekdays. We're just trying to make sure that more, more residents have the opportunity to attend these.
Okay, questions from council? Okay, you have a number of motions there. First one, that we scheduled the three full-day budget deliberation meetings in council chambers for November 1st, 3rd and 4th. Who would like to make that motion? Counselor Fideev? We can call the vote. That is carried, thank you. For the next motion directs administration to schedule four public consultation sessions on November 27th, 29th, 30th. Am I missing a number?
You're missing a number there.
Yeah, 27th, 28th.
It's only three.
It is four sessions, but only three days.
Okay.
On the 27th, we're proposing one in the morning and one in the afternoon.
Okay, very good. Who would like to make that one?
I'll make that motion, Mr. Reeve.
Counselor Jubenbaugh, we can call the vote. That is carried, thank you.
Reeve Sarchuk.
Yes.
Is council wanting to select the locations for these public consultations?
27th, we, you know what, save it for the new council. Let the, let them decide. It'd be, yeah, good to break their teeth on maybe something.
Thank you.
Easy. Next one is directs administration to schedule a one-hour budget question period at the beginning of a regular meeting of council on November 12th. Who would like to do that? Deputy Reeve. Okay, call the vote. That is carried, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. Reeve?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve, members of council. In terms of the locations, we, administration had, had some discussions to where they would best be and unfortunately, between those discussions and today, the province has increased the restrictions.
Yeah.
So we're just kind of waiting and seeing what that would look like. It may be that onsite public consultation may be frankly impossible.
Yes.
So we're just kind of waiting to see where that may flesh out over the course of the next two to three weeks.
Okay. Okay, infrastructure services.
Morning, Mr. Reeve, members of council.
Morning.
I have a couple of RFDs in front of you today. The first one is for the 2021 engineering tenders cancellation. At the regular meeting of council on August 25th, 2021, items 7.4.4, 7.4.5 and 7.4.6 of the meeting agenda regarding the engineering tender awards for three road construction projects were presented for council's consideration. Council directed administration in all three items to bring back additional information to a future meeting. Administration conducted internal and external discussions regarding these projects. After consideration, administration is canceling the tenders of all three engineering projects presented at, at August 25th, 2021 council meeting, agenda items 7.4.4, 7.4.5, 7.4.6, and will be re-tendering as per the current MD policy two B point zero one two procurement Sources of funding are, are listed below and we recommend that council accepts the 2021 engineering tender cancellation report as information.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, motion to accept as information by Counselor Fideev. Discussion, we can call the vote. Okay, the next item is the wood chipper.
Yes, thank you. Replacement of unit 21470, the wood chipper. Due to damage sustained in an incident on July 23rd, 2021 on Range Road 490, unit 21470, the wood chipper was damaged, or sorry, was deemed unreparable by MD insurance provider. In seeking out a replacement, three quotations were received and the submission from Arboris Supply Company, Inc., is, is a direct replacement for the damaged unit and is also the lowest cost of all three quotes as listed below. We have Arboris Supply for sixty-two thousand, Hepburn Enterprises for seventy-two thousand two eighty-six seventy, and Radius Industrial Works for ninety-seven thousand one fifty-three. The wood chipper is a critical piece of, of equipment in the MD fleet and is utilized to clear obstructions and improve sightlines on rural roads. This is an insurance claim and although the MD would pay up, pay upfront the total cost, the insurance company will reimburse the MD for the cost minus the deductible of five thousand. As this unit was not a capital replace, on the capital replacement list in 2021 budget, administration is bringing this item forward to council for purchase approval. The funding to come from 2021 Infrastructure Services operating budget for insurance claims and that would be the, the five thousand. And our recommended action is that council approves the purchase of the Model 12 XP Bandit Chipper from Arboris Supply Company, Inc. for sixty-two thousand to be funded from the 2021 operating budget.
Okay, thank you. Questions? Okay, motion to go ahead with the purchase. Counselor Jubenbaugh?
I'll make that motion, Mr. Reeve.
Okay, that approves the purchase of the Model 12 XP Bandit Chipper from Arboris Supply for sixty-two thousand dollars to be funded from the 2021 operating budget. Okay, and we can call the vote. That is carried, thank you. Thanks. Thank you, gentlemen. Oh, one question?
I think at the last council meeting, I had a question in regards to the, some of the dust controls in Ward Six and then some were at a pretty substantial cost and you were going to look into the, the reasoning why that was and I don't believe I received an update or council received an update on that.
Sorry, yes, through the reef and to all of council, I did, I did some research on that and the, the total cost for some of those were due to, it says it was a 200-meter dust control, some of them stretched out a little farther to a 300 in order to, in order to reach from one to the next. Another one was, there was a teardrop at the end of one of those dust controls or a, a turnout on the other, at one of those dust controls where it just increased the cost of that. So I think there were two, I believe, that were about double of what the average of the rest of them were. And that was the, that was the, that was the reasoning for that. I apologize for not getting that out to you, but that was the reasoning.
It was more than double, like to get a little better breakdown on that because it was two hundred and some, right? It was a lot of money.
Uh.
I, yeah, I looked into it, yeah.
Okay.
It should be, yeah, just, just didn't, didn't make sense at, at a dead-end road that the cost would be that, that much.
Okay.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Mr. Reeve?
Yes.
Questioned, through the reef, Mr. Bespolko, any idea when those speed limit signs will be changed from eighty to ninety on the ones we approved?
Uh, no, through the reef, no, I, I don't. I will, I'll, I'll check and see if they have been received already and then if, when the, the timeline is to change the speed limit signs.
Mr. Theo?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Reeve. I did receive an email from Mr. Bespolko several days ago regarding the question on the dust control. This came straight from the foreman in charge of that area and, "Good afternoon, you were asking for clarity on the dust control two dash four 2022 Township Road 614. The complete dust control is 300 meters long. If I'd have done the original 200 meters, the cold mix would have ended in the middle of the next residence driveway. This 300-meter dust control takes care of five residents, they all live close enough together and, and I do have some photos that I can send out to council. I did not think that it would look appropriate at our end if we stopped halfway through the next three residence approaches, so he made the decision to continue. Again, there's some photographs that I'll send out. As you can see in the picture, there's a half-moon driveway where we spread cold mix, which was an extra and the subgrade needed work. We ended up needing to create a, we'd had to dig out a five-meter stretch in length and an eight-meter wide where it was top spoil protruding through the gravel. That took both aggregate and time. Although at this time, we tried out, also, this is where we tried out our new cold mix. We had to lift it up several times before we could get it to pack because it was not the same formula as last year. I was not satisfied with the first lay, therefore the cost was slightly higher than the other dust control sections."
Thank you for that great explanation.
So through the reef, is that, is that, okay. Thank you.
Super. All right, thanks. Okay, Mr. Theo, you're up next. Municipal marketing video initiatives report.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve, members of council. I'll, I'll turn this particular report over to the acting general manager of Community and Planning Services.
Good morning, council.
Morning.
Administration would like to present council with an update on the collaborative marketing initiatives we've undertaken over the last two years. Specifically in 2020 and 2021, the MD in partnership with other northeast Alberta municipalities as well as Meatee Crossing united to create symbiotic content for two ongoing campaigns. One is the hashtag Take It To The Lake campaign and the hashtag Ski North Alberta. Both of these initiatives are coordinated with our producer Seekers Media. The content includes video, photos, stories and social media exposure. Administration has created a total of four new videos for the hashtag Take It To The Lake summer campaigns to showcase the Bonneville and Cold Lake region. The Take It To The Lake Community Consortium of the MD, Lacklebush County, Vermilion, Athabasca and Meatee Crossing harnesses the power of partnership, giving us consistent branding for the northeast area and boosts our tourism operators and oper, and operations out to the rest of Alberta. So what we're going to do is we'll just quickly, if council is good with it, we'd like to show those four videos. The first two will be from the 2020 campaign and the next two are from our current 2021 campaign.[1696.04] So those are Take It To The Lake video campaigns. Next, we will switch over to our videos created for the 2020 hashtag #SkiNorthAlberta winter campaign, which was used in 2020 and in early 2021. A second video was shot in late 2021 winter season in an effort to avoid the visual evidence of the pandemic. So we weren't able to use that yet, so that will be coming up here in this winter season. The hashtag #SkiNorthAlberta campaign sees the MD and Kinnisou Ridge partner with the same Take It To The Lake Consortium, as well as with Grand Prairie Tourism, Jasper Tourism, Marmot Basin, Nighthawk, and White Court. In the past, this winter content has included the Alpine skiing, as well as Nordic skiing, ice fishing, snowmobiling, and other outdoor winter adventures. So with that, we'll play that video.
Councilor Scars, I have a question.
Yeah, just, if we can talk about the other videos.
Sure.
Just give me a little history of that.
So it's, I'm just curious as to, the MD, so the MD funded those videos? We had someone make them, is that right?
Through the Reeve, so through the partnership that we have in this initiative, we actually get grant funding to undertake these videos. In our partner organizations or communities, they do the same thing. So they get the same number of videos, just like we get. But we are pretty much getting it at, I would say, a third of the cost of if we were doing it by ourselves. So yes, we do partner and work with Zenseekers to produce the videos.
So I'm just curious, I got a few questions. So all the images in those videos are in the MD?
That is correct, within the MD boundaries.
I'm just curious, that one, the first video had the bridge, it looked like it was going through a big lake, I don't know where that is. You know where?
I'll ask Tracy to step up, as she is very intimately familiar with these locations.
Yeah, and then I'm also curious as to, you know, do businesses pay to have a subvertize for them? Is that part of the deal, too?
Through the Reeve, no, they do not pay. However, they volunteer their time and their involvement with it. How, I did ask really, ask our previous marketing officer this question, how do we determine the businesses that participate? Based on the requirements of the grant program, there are some limitations as far as the size or the entrepreneur level of each of the businesses that we are required to meet. The other side of that is, in addition to that, we do, did use our own discretion as far as what the services were provided, or what the facility provides, and how accepted it is within the community, or how valuable it was within the community. So it was a bit, it wasn't, there wasn't a formal call that was put out, if that's kind of where you're thinking. However, there was definitely, based on the involvement and the engagement with the business community and the tourism operator specifically, we were able to gauge which ones would be able to meet within the very short timelines that we are provided with, and which ones would be able to highlight the MD from our perspective in a very positive, extremely positive light.
And then, I guess I'm just curious as to also, Take It To The Lake, but I didn't really see any of our own campgrounds. I mean, we've seen Kinnisou Beach, we've got Vezo Beach, right? I didn't see any walking trails, I didn't, you know, there's campsites at Muriel Lake that we didn't see on there. So I'm just curious, you know, it's our Take It To The Lake, but why is it, like, it was mostly Kinnisou Beach I seen on there, right? And the Marina and things like that, which is fine, but it's not really MD. And the one commercial didn't even have anything MD in it. It was all Jenny's Diner and the studio over here and stuff. So I'm just curious as to Take It To The Lake, but...
Okay, so through the Reeve, through, in the first couple, there were a couple, I think there was one for sure, and the second one where there was a campground. Do you remember which campground that was, with Lisa and her husband?
Yeah.
No, it's the one you were saying, too.
Well, it was Rocky Meadows.
It was Muriel Lake?
That was Muriel Lake. That campground is our campground in that video.
So that was, I'm sorry, Tracy, was that the first video?
Yeah, the one with Rocky Meadows.
With Rocky Meadows. Okay, so that was Muriel Lake. I know with the second year, with the two at the end, part of the reasoning around that was, because the MD is quite large, we wanted to focus one in the Bonneville, this side of the MD, and then the Cold Lake area on the other side. And the other thought was, because there was more outdoor campground coverage in the first two, we wanted to also incorporate the urban tourism operators as well, given that some people do like to see that balance of outdoorsy with urban amenities. So, in my opinion, I would like to see a little bit more recognition or involvement from our urban partners as far as these initiatives go. I think we would only improve the coverage and the messaging that we do as a region if we do do that. However, at this time, all of these videos were done as an MD initiative.
Yeah, and so, I mean, I guess it's just my point to say that, you know, we've invested so much into this area, and I didn't really see any of that in those videos, right? And even the C2 Center, if you wanted to go urban, right? We invest lots of money there. There's a beach, the trails, and I guess I hope I see in the winter ones, you know, Kinnisou's there, and the ski trails, the cross-country ski trails that we've done, and things like that. So to me, I just would have liked to see more of what we've done, the MD, what we want to promote, right? So, just my points. And I'm curious where that one bridge is there, I don't know, I haven't recognized that one, but...
No, it's not, actually. First of all, we do have some older videos that we did do with Seekers that do concentrate more on some of our campgrounds. Vezo was undergoing some upgrades this summer when we were doing that first video. The first video where the Jenny's Diner images are from, the lake shots are from Vezo Beach. So we do have that, but because of the upgrades, we couldn't really focus there without showing paving equipment and such this year. As for the bridge, we took advantage of a very wet year last year, and that is the Murphy Road. On the way to Muriel. So, it looks good.
Councilor Podev?
So in regards to the grant funding, was it fully grant-funded? Was there any other partnerships involved in the part that wasn't grant-funded? Just a few questions.
Sure. Through the Reeve, how it works is, the consortium submitted an application stating, "We would like to do this content, or this amount of content per partner." Once Travel Alberta approves that, I believe there was also a CARES grant that was involved, or was that through Go East?
That was the Go East.
Okay, sorry. So this is fully Travel Alberta grant funding. So what happens is, depending on what was approved, because they don't necessarily approve the entire scope of the project that was submitted as the application, once we get that confirmation, then, depending on how much they gave us, would depend on how much each partner would have to additionally add to it. So in this case, for each one of these campaigns, I think it was approx, it was either, it was between a quarter to a third of the actual cost of, if we did it ourselves, that it would cost us to actually do this initiative. For example, I want to remember on one, I believe the cost was $8,000. That's a big ring for a big guy.
So is there a value on that, like a dollar amount?
Absolutely, and I can look that up for council and share that after, if you would prefer.
There's also another initiative by, with Rita, about the drone videos. I was just wondering, what is the update on that? Are we finished that project? Are we, I'm not quite sure where that sits right now. It's the same, similar type, right? Where a bunch of different regions, we're gonna do a drone video of their great locations or hotspots, and then we're going to cross-reference each municipality, and we're gonna put it all in one big framework?
Yes, that is correct. Through the Reeve, if, can we just watch this one last video? And then I can go ahead and give you an update on that? Yeah, for sure.
I thought you were, I thought you were, we were done. Sorry.
You have to jump into the winter campaign here, just one quick sec. So as I mentioned, there is one other one which was completed in late 2021, or sorry, late ski season, 2020, 2021, so earlier this year, which will be unveiled and promoted as the ski season starts. So administration is, recommended action on this report? Is that council accepts the Municipal Marketing Video Initiatives Report as information?
Okay, thank you. The intended market for the videos?
So the market is, there is a lot, the main focal point is the videos that are used on our Facebook page. It's also used on the Zenseekers page as well. Because of the cross-marketing, we also get coverage through through all of the municipal partners and the communities, because everything all connects back to all of the catalog, I guess, of videos. In addition to these videos, we also get quite a bit of photos that we utilize in our own marketing materials, like our annual reports, our adventure guides in the winter and the summer, as well as our own website and whatnot.
Good, thank you. Okay, do we have a motion to go ahead and accept this as information?
I'll make that motion, and then I'll also ask another question as well. So since we're somewhat on the Travel Alberta radar now, since they're doing some grant funding, what are things to look forward to the next four, 10 years, as far as being on the radar? Instead of all the focus being down around the Canmore, Banff area, Jaspers, are we going to get a little bit more light here? And as far as showcasing our beautiful region that we have?
Through the Reeve, we were very, this past year, we did receive all of the funding that we had applied for. So it was, we were approved, I guess I should say, not necessarily that we're provided everything that we, the financial side. However, there has been, in the last couple of years, more financial support through grants, through Travel Alberta, that have been available to municipalities. At this time, they do have another one that is open for this, up till this fiscal year, to the end of March 2022, which has recently been announced. However, they have made it a little bit more stringent, where before, it used to be that if you were not the lead of the grant application, and you were just a partner within the grant application, you weren't disqualified from applying again in that fiscal year. However, they, in this call, they have removed that and replaced that with any partners that have previously received. Grant funding cannot, or can't say cannot, will not be, are not a priority as far as the awarding when they're making their decision process. So the funding is still being provided so far. Going into the future, two, three, four years, the provincial budget projections show that Travel Alberta does maintain grant funding. However, that could change at any spring when the province does issue their provincial budgets.
So could we request that $10 million and settle for $1 million? Sorry, tongue-in-cheek, but, you know, it's so sad to see them just concentrate around Canmore, Banff, not even Drumheller, not, you know, not even up here. I'd like to see that somewhat changed by the push of it, so...
So this one goes back quite a few years. There was a lot of movement in around the Calgary West and focusing on the Cowboy Trail and all of that. Then they did move over, and they focused on Drumheller and that area. Coming from Travel Alberta, and this is going back about five years ago, they were saying that the movement was going to be to start doing different regions. I think this is one of those, one of those places where in the last, you know, under two years, that governance has failed once again, and, you know, people, it just dropped off the radar. And hopefully, once government gets back to work, then we can get back on the, on the queue, or in the queue, to be recognized as a truly a tourist destination, so. Mr. CEO?
Thank you, Mr. Reeve, members of council. I have some familiarity with these issues in that my wife, up until recently, was the executive director for Canadian Badlands Tourism in the Drumheller area. One of the things we are missing here, and Canadian Badlands was a leader in this, was that there were 65 municipalities involved in Canadian Badlands as a group, and they lobbied Travel Alberta together through the Badlands. lobbied Travel Alberta together through the Badlands Association for a lot of the recognition and the, and the exposure that they wanted. I would suggest that long-term tourism in this area probably needs to have a very specific group that's created, that all the municipalities in the area, Cold Lake, us, County St. Paul, Village of Glendon, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, should give some thought to forming and funding an organization such as that, that would represent the entire region in terms of that tourism and get more exposure. We can go individually to Travel Alberta or with one or two municipalities. That does not have the same impact that having 16 or 17 municipalities going and talking directly to Travel Alberta would have. So I would, I would just leave that, that may be something post-election that the council may want to consider is, is beginning those conversations to how we would create an actual tourism association that would, that would bring everybody in the region together.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Skarzyn.
Yeah, I think that's great, too. You know, anything like that happens, though, it takes years and years, right? So I think that we probably have the capability here with some of our drones and stuff. I mean, these videos are fine. I think we missed the market bit. I think we could probably get next year, a lot of our own attractions, right? That is, the trestle wasn't in there either. You know, the adventure park will be ready to view. There's so many things, there was no quadding, right? There's, that's a huge part of this area, too, so. But I mean, with our own drones and a couple days worth of videoing, you know, focus on what we can offer as EMD. I think we can do that internally without grant funding, but you know, not say we shouldn't fly or whatever, but I'd just like to see more, you know, promote what we've done, right?
Through, through the reef, if I could just speak to that. Unfortunately, in the past, I know administration hasn't brought forward all of the video campaigns that we have done in the past. I can tell you that we probably have another, if we went back farther, we probably have about at least four, if not five, years of video material. So kind of where Tracy was alluding to is we do, and we have done promotions of our camp, of our campgrounds, of the, of the trestle, of a few of those things that you did, did mention, and you're absolutely right, these ones didn't necessarily focus on them just because we already have that inventory, and we do periodically put those out through our Facebook page. So we, through that, we do have a schedule as well where everything does get dated after about four years. So it is within the, because we're limited in how many we can do a year, we do try to rotate through. So exactly what you're focusing on, say our campgrounds and a bit more of our MD content come next year, next summer, and these grants do get approved again, they would be definitely on the highlighting list for sure for those videos.
Yeah, just one more positive story here, in regards to the trestle, he kind of reminded me. I have a friend of mine who's been up here for the last eight to 10 years, coming in from Edmonton, like in around the region, just, just for business, and I evaluated him as a, as a guest judge for the Cherry Grove Car Show, and he came up with his family. They stayed at the Holiday Inn in Cold Lake, and we had some time, some downtime in the evenings, so we went to, to the trestle to see the, see the sunrise, or sunset. And here's, his comments were, shut up. Tell me, why do I need to go to, you know, to B.C., right? We seen the beautiful sunset, and we started talking about the trail, and he goes, so I can get on my mountain bike from my hotel and bike here? And I'm like, yeah. So again, him and his family are coming next year with their mountain bikes, and they're gonna be checking out the area. So again, and he says, where are the signs? Where are the signs for this? I've drive on this, this highway, you know, on, every other week, and I haven't seen the signs. So again, lots of, lots of opportunities, and I think with Travel Alberta, I think we could probably capture some of those people that want to spend money here and stay here.
Good. All right, Counselor Jubinville.
One, one last comment. Yeah, so, you know, great job on, on, on these videos, I think, and I think it's something that regardless if there's grants or not, that you have to put something in a budget that this carries on, because we're just starting to see the effect of people being aware, you know, like, like go northeast instead of going, going west of the mountains or take it to the lake. Because I had the opportunity to meet some people from Edmonton at Vezo Beach this year that they, they just, they just loved it. And it was the first time that they came into our area to camp, and just were totally amazed with Vezo Beach and the trails that were offered in the area. So yeah, no, we just gotta, we just gotta keep it up and, and show them, yeah, the whole area.
Good. I didn't see a disclaimer at the end of the videos saying that no employees were harmed in the making of these. So it's just something to be, you know, in the back of the mind.
They may have been.
They may have been, yes. With that, we had a motion over here from Counselor Fadav to, to accept this as information, and we can call a vote. What do we need? Oh, it's freezing again? Okay, all in favor? That's carried. Thank you. Okay, next is council invitations.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve, members of council. So we have three invitations in particular. The Grassroots Movement Committee, Orange Shirt Day 2021, which is held, will be held on September 30th of 2021. The Grassroots Movement Committee is organizing activities to include speakers, traditional food, theater performances, indigenous and Métis dances, and indigenous and Métis art displays and craft tables for Orange Shirt Day 2021, also known as the National Day for Truth and Reconciliation. The event is an all-day event, starting at 9:00 a.m. and ending around 9:00 p.m., and is tentatively scheduled to be at the Cole Notre Dame High School. This event is also to include an orange shirt walk down Main Street between 4:00 and 4:30 p.m. The committee has personally invited MD Council to attend and requests that the opening of the evening portion, Reeve Sawchak, to step forward and say a few words. I would add that I have not received any updates regarding the new restrictions with this event. The second one is the Bonneville Friendship Center and Alberta Health Services Vigil October 7th, 2021. The Bonneville Friendship Center in partnership with Alberta Health Services invite council to attend the vigil at the Bonneville and District Centennial Center at 7:00 p.m. on October 4th, 2021. This event is to honor all the indigenous children from residential schools who never made it home, the survivors and their families. Again, just as an update, the, the Centennial Center has, has restrictions in place, and anybody who would be wishing to attend that would obviously have to meet their restrictions to attend. And the third one is the 2021 Agricultural Service Board Regional Conference, Friday, November 5th, in Two Hills. The 2021 ASB Regional Conference is being held from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. in Two Hills, and more information to be provided at a later date. And again, I have no updates on, unless Mr. Yance has, I have no updates as to how the new restrictions would impact that. The only other, they're not council invitations, but just an addition, is the RMA District Zone Meeting that was scheduled for Friday is now virtual. We have booked the council chambers, and we'd be able to host that here as well. As I understand, the Bonneville High School grand opening is also postponed until, until a date into the future.
Okay. And I did speak with Soren, our District Five rep there, and he said that even though they have said that RMA is going ahead, everything is still very fluid there in regards to the, the rules, so. Okay, so we just need a motion then to accept these as information?
I think that was Mr. Reeve.
And attendance, if they exist, I guess? Yes, okay. Okay, approves counselors to attend events should they go through? And that was by Counselor Jubinville, and are we frozen still? No? Try it? Okay. That is carried, thank you.
Mr. Reeve?
Yes.
Would council still wish an update on the Alberta Hub drone video project? Which Mr. Counsel Fadav had requested?
Yeah, sure.
Yes, please.
So the Alberta Hub did provide the MD of Bonneville, as well as all of their members, the opportunity to participate in a drone video project, where 30-second drone video would be taken through their contractor to, to fly over and do these videos for all of the partners. The, each partner, or each, sorry, each member. So each member did provide feedback as far as what areas we would like them to focus upon. Since that time, the drones have been flown. The first draft of that videos, of those videos were provided to the members. When the, when we received ours, we reviewed it with our marketing team and our economic development officer and, and our chief administrative officer, and we felt that given, given its coverage and its current level of quality, it did not cover the MD of Bonneville, nor would it represent the MD of Bonneville accurately. Therefore, we requested Alberta Hub, as much as we appreciated the opportunity, that we do not want that video utilized to represent the MD of Bonneville.
Okay. Yeah, it's not as easy as just getting a drone and flying it. There's a little bit more to it, so. Thank you for the update. Okay, correspondence and information.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve, members of council. Correspondence that we received, and I'll just go through the list, but I won't go through each one of them individually, minutes from the BRFA board meeting of July 21, letter from the Alberta Fish and Game Association to rural municipalities, the cervid harvesting preserves, letter from AFGA to Premier Kenny, Minister Nixon, and Minister Dreschen, again regarding cervid harvesting preserves, letter from Cold Lake Chamber of Commerce, the Chamber Liaison Appointment, letter from Municipal Fairs, War Boundaries, Ministerial Order and Bylaw, the bulletin from the Bonneville Royal Canadian Legion Residential Schools' Memorial Monument unveiling, bulletin from the Bonneville Royal Canadian Legion, the Fourth Annual Turkey Blast Challenge, MD notice of fire damage, MD donations, and of course, the council action report is attached to that. The other thing I would make council aware of is we are watching in terms of the RMA convention currently scheduled for third week of November, as to what the current restrictions being placed by the City of Edmonton will be, and it's entirely possible that between now and then, there will be a requirement for mandatory vaccination, passports, et cetera, et cetera. So we'll keep council in, in the loop on those evolving changes in some of these, in some of these facilities, both inside and outside of our region.
Okay. We just need a motion to accept the correspondence as information. Deputy Reeve, we can call a vote.
To Reeve and council, I have a question once we finish voting. I believe on the letters 8.2 and 8.3, I believe the local AFGA was looking for a letter support on that, were they not? Gordon? May I ask Gordon to speak on that?
My name's Gordon Porey, I'm a... Red light. My name's Gordon Porey, I'm a past president of the Beaver River Fish and Game Association with our building in, in Bonneville here. I'm also a past president of Alberta Fish and Game, and these letters are in regards to CWD and cervid harvest preserves. There is an unmitigated pile of evidence that shows cervid farms, deer farms, elk farms, whatever, spread CWD. The first instance of CWD was in Acadia Valley with the nearby farms in Saskatchewan, and since that time, it's marched through the province. It's up into this area, both 500, 501, 502 are mandatory head submissions now to try and monitor it, because the province doesn't do any culls anymore. CWD has been shown to affect Reese's monkeys. They've managed to infect Reese's monkeys, which are used in laboratory experiments to proctamate humans, so it's a possibility that this could affect humans. They thought it wouldn't affect moose. They managed to inject a moose in captivity, and in Alberta, wild moose were found with CWD in the Red Deer River. It's a devastating disease, increasing, allowing game farms to become hunt farms or kill farms will cause an increase in people looking to make some money, but at what cost? The cost is both to the wildlife, they don't believe in the crossover to beef, but you already have a similar one in beef. If that ever crossed over into beef, the economic impact in this province would be unimaginable. Absolutely no beef could leave the province. How'd you like that? Lots of free beef for everybody, but who wants to eat it? The World Health Organization does not recommend eating any animal that has been infected with CWD. They don't believe it'll transfer, but they said the same thing about BSE. So take these letters, please, seriously, and should a group come, come calling to look for regulations to allow hunt farms, I hope you have all the information, because they won't tell you any of this. Thank you.
What, what has been the province's stance on this so far?
I'm, I'm not sure what, what you mean.
Well, have, have they shown any movement towards supporting these, these hunt farms?
Every couple of years...
It comes up.
It comes up. Somebody brings it up through the back door and say...
Yeah.
And in fact, the agricultural change that happened here this, a year and a half ago, with the ability to buy an animal harvested on the farm, butchered on the farm, and have the farmer, that opened the door for them a crack.
Okay.
I told AFGA at that time, I said, this is something we gotta watch, because they're gonna come through and try and open that door up into, into hunt farms.
Yeah.
But even Ralph Klein said, nobody's gonna shoot my buffalo, you know? But there's always somebody trying to push, and we gotta, we're gonna stay, try and stay vigilant and keep pushing back as we can. We do have friends in government.
Sure. Okay.
Thank you.
I wonder if we can, we can ask administration just to come back with a more information and see what the, the current stance is from the province.
Thank you, Mr. Members of council. We certainly will, and there are probably, well, they're not just probably, there are ways internally, if it council wishes, for example, through land use bylaw, to, to deal with whether or not, you know, permits or, or requests for land redesignation or subdivision for those purposes.
Okay.
We certainly could have some wording in our land use bylaw regarding, regarding that as well.
Okay. Yeah, if we can put that on the radar for the, for new council, for, for discussion. Okay, anything else? That's good. Did we have the motion to accept this? It's all done, right? Okay. That was carried? Good. It was a while ago. Okay. Okay, next reports and questions from council. Start with Deputy Reeve.
Mr. Reeve, I met with Minister Pahn in Cold Lake and Bonneville, and one of the questions discussed was the matrix, which is 100-point system, and if you're above the income threshold of $28,650, whatever it is, then you automatically... above the income threshold of $28,650, whatever it is, then you automatically lose 30 points. So, we have now a third of the people applying for the lodge are high income. So, we're asking the minister, we asked this, uh, several years ago, to finally change the matrix to increase the income threshold there. Also went to a hub meeting, um, in Manville, uh, met Perry Phillips for the first time. There were three MLAs there. One concern was, uh, they decreased the funding to half from a hundred thousand to 50,000. And councillor Fadiev can, uh, explain that further if he wishes. Also had a lodge meeting. The rooms are finally being filled up slowly. We had a number of COVID cases in the Cold Lake Lodge. Things are under control. The appropriate measures have been undertaken. And there's been one positive, uh, non-symptomatic case in the Bonny Lodge as well. So, uh, that's all I can say at this time. Okay. But things are under control and, uh, they're quarantined if they have to be quarantined. And, uh, that's it for me.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Jubenville?
Yep, sir. Things were very quiet with me. I really have nothing to report on.
Councillor Skarsen?
Yeah, so I had a, uh, we had a CT meeting the other night there, a special meeting just to discuss the new protocols there. So, they're following the, um, guidelines set forth with the passports to get in and, uh, 12 to 17 is exempt for youth sports. And then we'll just follow what, uh, comes next. We had a regional economic development, um, committee meeting there and it was, there wasn't a lot. Um, just reviewed a bit of the branding strategy. We have a, a, um, a recap with the girl that's running that, um, tomorrow. Get an update from her and then, um, yeah, we worked on some business attraction marketing plans and, um, the facade improvement plan, had an update on that. It sounds like town's businesses are all filled up. Uh, there's one in the MD that's taken advantage so far. And, uh, so it's going well as well. So, um, whether or not, yeah, there, there hasn't been much for me this month. So...
Okay. Councillor Fadiev?
Yeah, I had a regional economic development meeting that I missed because I was too busy drag, you know, dragging out my, uh, my signs. And I was told the, uh, yeah, didn't even see the notifications at all or nothing. So, I apologize for that. Uh, BRFA meeting, uh, things are kind of usually on schedule there, but we're looking at RCMP calls from July 2020 to 2021. Uh, July of last year, we had 604 calls compared to July of 2021 at 1,345. So, a drastic, uh, drastic increase on the ambulance side, where there's about 11 calls per day that are taken. And our 911 takes in about 161 calls per day on that. Um, everything else is, uh, yeah, that's, that's pretty well it besides, uh, mopping up my signs and, uh, cleaning them up. And it's all good. Thank you.
Councillor Duchesne?
Uh, okay. I, um, I took part in a Zoom meeting with the province on the, uh, the aggregate, uh, problems that they're having. And they, uh, they set up some, a new working group, including the RMA and Alberta Santa Grav Association and, uh, AEP. And they're trying to work through some of the kinks in that, uh, application process. But I think, uh, after what they've said they were gonna do, it's already looking like they're adding to the, uh, to the red tape. They've, uh, they're going to probably be sending each municipality, uh, where the applications are involved, um, a, as part of the decision-making group. So, uh, that'll, that'll just add more red tape because it's gonna have to go through each municipality. Other than that, uh, I was at, uh, Munich Core Meeting. Um, and, uh, we've been informed that we are, uh, a member of the Alberta Companies Act, that we are regulated by them. So, uh, we've have to do some, some more, uh, planning and, uh, rectifying in our, our meetings. Um, the, uh, there's things that were discussed. Uh, we've had a, a fire invoice to us, uh, on the, uh, trail from BRFA. And, uh, we need clarification on who and what and how that works, uh, for each municipality, who pays the, the fire expense. So, uh, because we don't know who and how the fires were started. Um, so we were discussing the, um, the, the videos for Alberta travel. And just, just for your information, um, Munich Core Trail System and the Iron Horse Trail are part of, uh, Travel Alberta. So, if you're looking for stuff like that, I think we all know that already. And, uh, they're working through DMO, uh, Destination Marketing Organisation, to advertise our areas through the trail system. So, that's already in place. And, uh, and, uh, speaking on the signage, yes, they are working on the signage themselves and looking for partners in that, I believe. Um, went to the Chamber of Commerce. The Chamber has developed a, uh, a letter of suggestion to, to members to help them, uh, work with the vaccine protocol. Uh, they've also offered, uh, rapid testing to take some burden off the members, business members. And, uh, they're sent their letter out to their members to please have, uh, compassion for other employees, uh, since it's just part of their job. Um, I also have a question for Darcy, uh, at the C2. Did you mention that they're implementing passports? Okay. I, we'll have to talk about that later. Thank you. Um, went to the lodge and housing. Um, we've had some surprise, um, inspections from OHNS. And, uh, we passed them, but it was, it's during a really bad time during COVID outbreaks. And, and so staff are getting pretty stressed out about things like that. And also, uh, they did a standards review on, uh, through AHS, surprise inspection, which, uh, should be done every year, which they passed also. So, other than that, I have nothing else. Thank you.
Councillor Swiger, you have a question?
Yeah, just a little bit of a discussion about our, our campgrounds. And I'd just spoken briefly with the CAO about this earlier at the meeting. But, um, it'd be nice if we, uh, could get an update on, on how our campgrounds actually did this year and maybe as compared to last year, that sort of thing. Um, uh, as, as far as how much funding we're bringing in for those camp, from those campgrounds. Uh, but we talked a little bit about Muriel Lake and, you know, it's a great spot out there, but it's probably underutilized. We've talked about maybe trying to get, you know, more, more, uh, people to come out to that campground. Um, I was out with my wife and we're looking for access to the lake. And, you know, honestly, I did not real, I've been out a few times and not realized that there's, there's one, uh, access point on that lake, but not very well labeled at all that you can actually get to, to the lake. And so, um, maybe we need a bit more signage and, and, uh, maybe do something at that one lake access point. It's actually a boat launch, but like I said, not well marked at all. Uh, and maybe clean it up so that folks who actually do camp out there can, they do know that they can actually get to the lake and there's maybe clean up that beach area and give them a spot. Because if you, if you go out to Muriel Lake now, you're probably half a mile walk to, to the lake through grass. It's probably six, seven feet tall. So, uh, not, not really great for folks that thought they could go to Muriel Lake and camp and get to the lake. So, I think we can, we can probably help that, help that area out a bit with a bit of, bit of work. Yeah, but that's it.
Yeah, just a quick update. And this wasn't a, uh, formal Chamber of Commerce meeting, but I did have a conversation with them. And they, uh, they asked our opinion in regards to, uh, the, I guess, uh, delegate interviews or, uh, regards to wards five and six. They also be doing a Reeve one as well and the Cold Lake, uh, City of Cold Lake one that they're doing. So, it'll be interviews and off here. They have been in contact with administration here or not. Esther's raising her hand. So, they have. So, yeah, just, that was the, just a comment they have for me.
Through the Reeve, uh, the Cold Lake Chamber has contacted us and, uh, has told us exactly what councillor Fadiev has said. They are going to be doing, um, candidate debates, um, pre-recorded for wards five and ward six. And it will be posted on their YouTube page. Um, they will be, uh, sending us links to it once it's available. And we will be promoting those as well on our election Facebook page, as well as our MD page. Additionally, just today, I was contacted by the Bonneville Chamber. And, uh, they will be doing similar, uh, debates pre-recorded, I understand, for wards one through wards four. And, um, so any candidates for those wards, please be prepared to be contacted by the Bonneville Chamber for, uh, those opportunities. Is additionally, we did also, administration reached out to all of our rural community associations and, uh, did encourage them to organize their own debate events and, uh, to please keep us informed. So, we will continue to post the information and promote it on our social media and websites.
Thank you. Uh, for my reports, uh, I also sat in on the aggregate one and a follow-up to that because, uh, you know, part of that was digitizing and, and trying to get it to, to move a little bit faster. Um, I did speak with the, uh, the local AR office and, uh, um, they're not sure, but that might end up coming underneath of them. And, uh, the work that they've done in regards to, um, uh, well development, uh, and, uh, the applications that used to take six to nine months, as we heard from Devon when we toured with them a couple of years ago, um, they are now down to five days. Um, now it's based on a, uh, quite the system in regards to your previous performance. So, if you are a company that has been in trouble, it's going to probably still take you six to nine months. But if you are one with a good record, then you, you'll be moved through fairly quickly. Uh, in the run-up to the elections, I got a couple of invitations to meet, uh, leaders of, uh, of parties, uh, from the, uh, the Maverick Party. Jay Hill was in town. And actually, a couple of us, uh, had, uh, lunch there with him. It was an opportunity to, uh, you know, anytime these, these federal leaders come to town, if you can, uh, push your, uh, your municipality, your region and what our top issues are, um, it helps to spread the word across the country. And, uh, we took advantage of that, um, bending his ear. On the, uh, the following Monday, I actually had brunch with, uh, Maxime Bernier. Um, and, uh, he's, he's a very, he's a very charismatic individual, that's for sure. Um, and, uh, but, uh, again, we were able to talk about the region, um, how important the industry is to, uh, to us and, and try and get that, uh, that message to Ottawa. Um, and, uh, of course, neither were successful here in the, uh, in the election, but, uh, at least they, they can take the word back. Uh, hearts for healthcare on, uh, last week as well. Uh, most of that was about the, uh, the Cold Lake Hospital and a COVID update there. And, uh, it was that, uh, they're, they're getting stretched to capacity. Uh, the emergency room is, uh, is pretty full. Uh, their rooms upstairs are quite full. And, um, and the, uh, the shortage of staff, uh, they're kind of at their limits as well. On the doctor situations in, in regards to recruitment, uh, they are scheduled to be up one. They, they're gaining three, but they're losing two. Uh, we had the Minister for Environment, and I think the, the CAO alluded to that, where the two issues being talked about were, um, uh, in regards to First Nations consultation. And, uh, um, I think that was, uh, there was an agreement that more discussion was necessary and, and contacts were shared. And so, those things are still in movement. It was, uh, um, it was good, you know? It was good that, you know, we had a minister at least in the area once again. Uh, and that was it for me. Okay, anything else? We, uh, we have come to the end of the, the regular session. Uh, nothing else? Motion to adjourn? Nobody wants to adjourn, okay? All right, councillor Swiger, thank you. And, uh, last meeting, uh, all in favor? That's carried. Thank you. And thanks again, folks. So...